Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 19th, 2014 Board of Trustees Meeting, North Idaho College. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
We have a verification of the quorum. All of the trustees are present. I don't have any special guests signed up to introduce tonight. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? And are there any suggested changes or modifications?
Chair, a question?
Yes.
On the minutes on page six, where we, top of the page, last sentence. Vice President Browning responds that college does have other policies and guidelines that allow for leaves of absence upon approval of supervisors and employees' chain. My question was employees' change, chain. I assume that means that...
Give me the reference again, I'm sorry.
Page six?
Yes.
Top of the page, first paragraph, last sentence, literally the last sentence, employees' chain. But the context is it allows for leaves of absence upon approval of supervisors and employees' chain. I think that's like chain of command, maybe, or something? Just wasn't sure if that was clear enough.
Okay, well, do you want to make them...
I don't know what to do with this.
Well, if we're going to change it, we need a motion to change it.
Do we just want to ask what Mark meant?
You just downed that chain?
The policies and guidelines as they presently exist, and I'm quite frankly, I don't remember exactly. It requires an approval of the supervisors and employees' chain of command?
I believe that's what that's supposed to be.
It seemed like it would, but maybe there's some...
So if we put in chain of command?
That makes sense to you who have to live it.
Right?
Thank you, sir.
Is that your motion?
Yep. I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Any discussion? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Okay, chain of command will be inserted. Any other changes or additions or modifications? None of the minutes are approved as amended. We don't have anybody signed up for public comment, I don't believe. We do. We had somebody signed up, and then he withdrew it.
I had to sign up, I guess, for part of the...
Thank you. Thank you, Israel. Celebrating success, Kristi Doyle.
And Sarah Fladland.
And Sarah Fladland. Sarah?
Thank you. I am Sarah Fladland. I am the grants coordinator here at the college, and I have with me Kristi Doyle, who's our Dean of Health Professions and Nursing. And we are very excited to share with the board some of our, well, our most recent large grant, I guess you could say, that has funded our Idaho Center of Excellence Healthcare Partnership, otherwise known as ICE, because we do love our acronym here at the college. So I'm going to start us off and just give you a little bit of an overview of the actual funding, and then Kristi's going to take it over and discuss more of the project specifics. So this grant was funded by the U.S. Department of Labor, the Employment Training Administration, and it's the Trade Adjustment Act for Community Colleges Career Training Grant Program, otherwise known as TACT. And so another acronym for you. So in late spring of last year, 2014, U.S. Department of Labor released the grant solicitation for their final round. And this is the fourth and final round. And you may recall that NIC did receive funding from the U.S. Department of Labor for Rounds one and two. Rounds one funded our Physical Therapist Assistant Program, as well as the Summer Bridge Program. And then Round two funded our Aerospace Initiative. We chose to sit out of Round three, and then we tackled Round four with a healthcare grant. So the purpose of this grant is to meet the workforce demand of the healthcare industry in Idaho. And we did partner with other institutions around the state, and Kristi will go into that in a little bit more detail. But we submitted a consortium application with NIC as the lead institution in the amount of $6,438,050 to create the Idaho Center of Excellence Healthcare Partnership. And I am very excited to report, as we all know, the grant was funded in full. It is a four-year grant, and there are multiple industry partners, as well as higher education partners. Kristi?
So NIC will be the fiscal agent of this grant, and the instructional unit responsible for deployment of the grant will be Health Professions and Nursing. And as Sarah said, the purpose really is to create office, offer, I'm sorry, to offer certificates and degrees across the consortia institutions that lead to industry credentials and entry-level employment for the healthcare industry. Thank you. So as you can see, our educational partners were obviously NIC, Lewis-Clark State College, Eastern Idaho Technical College, and ISU's College of Technology. We did invite College of Western Idaho and College of Southern Idaho to the table as well. However, they were working on another TACT grant at the same time, did not feel like they could do both, because it is a lot of work to do that. So we respect the fact that they were not able to partner with us on that. Thank you. So you can see, these are our employer partners. Across the state, obviously, the Idaho Hospital Association was instrumental in helping us get the support that we needed. And for NIC specifically, Kootenay Health, Heritage Health, and the Idaho Rural Health Consortium came to the table and offered support, and I'll get into a little bit more of the support that they're going to offer in a few minutes. But very instrumental to getting this grant off the ground, because we had to have industry input and support and letters of recommendation, et cetera, from industry. And all of these partners that you see on the screen will also be a part of our ICE Healthcare Leadership Team, which will be a statewide team that we will have. So we're excited to have everybody coming to the table for that. So as Sarah mentioned, the grant is 6.4 million, of which NIC receives 4.4. Eastern Idaho Technical is just over a million. Lewis-Clark is at 503,000, and Idaho State University's College of Technology is 412,000. So here's the program matrix, and you can see NIC is an overachiever, actually, not really an overachiever. We just had lots of industry requests, and so decided to play in all of the different offerings that we're going to do. And it was à la carte, so you, industry, I'm sorry, the institutions could choose one or multiple. And as you can see, ISU, College of Technology, did only choose one. ITech and LCSE chose other options to participate in. So just kind of an example of what we're going to do, the dental hygiene and the medical lab technician, we're hoping that those will be associate of a science degrees, meaning that they will transfer to a baccalaureate degree, medical lab technician, for instance, into a medical lab technologist program. The EMS paramedic and the pre-pharmacy, those will also be associate of science. Specifically, the pre-pharmacy would transfer to ISU's PharmD program. We have already had them at the table, and they are very interested in that partnership. Certificate programs that we have will be medical assistant and pharmacy technology. Certificate is, for the MA, is really an expansion to our NIC Sandpoint campus. And the pharmacy technology, we offer the only accredited program in the state of Idaho, and so we are expanding that to ITech and LCSE. We hear a rumor that there's going to be another grant application that CWI and CSI are going to work on to try and attach to what we're doing. So we'll see how all that pans out. We're more than willing to work with them on that, so hopefully they're able to accomplish that. Let's see. The bridge programs that you see, really, the focus of those is to help our military medics transition into programs, and so the focus will be not necessarily a certificate, but maybe a certificate of completion. And the focus is credit for prior learning. How do we give them credit for prior learning, through a prior learning assessment model? So what are we funding? Equipment across the different institutions. For example, pharmacy here, we will not need any equipment, but pharmacy at ITech, they need a full lab. LCSE, they are converting a workforce training non-credit program into a credit program for pharmacy, so they'll need pieces of it, but not all of it. Personnel will be to deploy the grant, also, obviously, the faculty and staff that will be full-time and part-time, again, across the consortium. The biggest components of this grant really have to do with the common curriculum statewide. So the idea is that all of the programs that you saw listed will offer online or IVC didactic for theory, and it will be deployed across the state. So one institution will be the one offering all of that to the receiving institutions, really creating that consistency across the state and transportability for students. And then the lab and the clinicals will be offered at the institution, or in our case, it might be in some of the facilities, and I'll explain that in a little bit. Prior learning assessment, again, is a key thing for us, as is professional development, because we have to train our faculty in how to use all these new tools and technology. So we have built in professional development. And then, obviously, we have a third-party evaluator that we will have to evaluate the entire grant, and then all the accrediting bodies will be evaluating the individual programs. I know I'm whipping through this, because we have 10 minutes. So here's our timeline. And I apologize, this is in alphabetical order, it is actually not by deployment, and I should have switched that around, and I apologize for that. Let me just give you a couple of things here. We did this purposely in steps, so we didn't inundate all of us, and again, specifically for NIC, because we are partnering on all of these. But you'll see, we consider easy launches, medical assistant to the Sandpoint Center. All we have to do is convert the content to an online format. So we'll be transitioning that in the spring. We have the EMS paramedic, again, that is really something that's more of the math, science, English classes that are already being taught. So we figured those would be kind of easy wins for us to get some numbers in the grant ahead of time and kind of deploy this in a systematic way, or we hope is a systematic way. So fall of '15, you'll see pharmacy technology and the Vet-to-RN Bridge Program. And then spring of '16 is really where we're going to focus on those military medic programs and the pre-pharmacy. And then lastly, for fall of '16, will be the dental, the med-lab tech, and the surge tech. And we put those at the end purposely, because they are a rigorous process to go through for accreditation, and we wanted to give ourselves that very last, last opportunity to be able to deploy at the very end of the grant, but still get counted. So that's why they're at the very end. So how many are we going to serve? We will serve right around 360 unique participants, and that's the DOL language. What that means is they will be in math, science, or English prerequisite courses, or they'll actually be in one of the programs. Again, this is statewide number, so 360 statewide. 237 of them will complete a funded program of study, and 224 will actually be employed at the end of the grant, or at the end of their program of study. So as with all grants and all great projects, you have to think about sustainability. So as we thought about sustainability, we looked at the Division of PTE, their state board, I'm sorry, the State Board of Education, Division of PTE, their strategic plan, and how we could align with that while we were developing this grant. And it was purposeful in how we did this. And what we looked at were two specific areas that they were focused on, which was not duplicating programs, which we are not duplicating programs as we do this, because we're sharing resources, and they were encouraging the use of shared resources. So we were purposeful in how we put that together, hoping that at the end of the grant funding, that will give us a strong argument to go back to say, you know, we really had tried to align with your strategic plan. So it was purposeful. A couple of the really fun industry partnerships that I'm really excited about, as we all know, we have no space. So in order to deploy some of these, we look to our industry partners. And so Heritage Health has offered to allow us to use their dental clinic for our lab component for the dental program, which was, it's a great opportunity, because dental programs require a full dental clinic. There was no way we could actually do that. So that's really exciting to be able to see, to see that partnership. The other one that I'm excited about actually is the surge tech program. Although the program director and all the online components will be coming from ITech, because they actually house a primary program, Kootenay Health has stepped up to say, we will allow you to come into one of our affiliate sites and have your mock OR. So we're not quite sure how that's going to play out yet, but again, exciting to see all those partnerships come together. So, and that's all I have. Did we whip through that fast enough?
Very nice. I'm sure there's some questions.
But the President had a comment.
I was just going to say, first of all, congratulations to Kristi and Sarah. What a wonderful job you did on putting that grant together. But my question is, on three programs, they are bridge programs that will serve veterans coming out of the military. And so do we have a strategy, or will there be a strategy, on how to recruit those individuals to ensure that there's enough mass to run those bridge programs?
That's a great question. We really focus a lot on the ISU area, because they do have a specific veterans center that they focus with. And they are willing to work with us on how to develop a strategy to do that. We don't have the resources that they do, but that will be part of that plan. And we just have to get there. And right now, it's really a primary focus of how do we even think about giving credit for prior learning before we even consider recruiting into that, so.
Thank you.
I would like to add to that, too, though. Up here in the north, we do have a great working relationship with Robert, is it Schuman? From Idaho Department of Labor, who's their veteran specialist, is it Schuman? And he was at the table with us at the very beginning as well, for both aerospace and this grant. And so I know that we will also be working to recruit veterans to NIC using the resources that they have at Idaho Department of Labor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, Kristi answered my question right at the end, but I still want to comment. Sarah and Kristi, first of all, this, this, you just made this seem like, oh, this just came along, because you're both very humble, but I, it's incredible what's happened with this grant. I'm in my 10th year on this board, and I look at just the dental hygiene position. And we fought so hard for that, wanted it so bad. Our former chair, Rowley Williams, just, it's all he wanted was a dental hygiene. Priscilla Bell worked so hard to try to get the dental hygiene, and we couldn't afford it. It's unreachable. And so to hear that we have a partnership with Heritage, that will, that was one of my questions, like, how are we paying for the equipment? Because it was so unreachable. But then add all these other programs in, too. It just, it doesn't even seem like it could be. So I couldn't be happier about this, and so excited for our students. So thank you for all that you've done to secure this. Thank you to President Joe and all the other admin and faculty involved. This is a life-changing difference to students at NIC. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I have a question. I suspect this is a bit of a new type of arrangement, this consortium of different institutions, as I understand it. And do you have a vision of how, when we get through the grant process and visas sort of settle down, is this envisioned to be a continuing consortium, or will it break up into its component parts?
That's a great question. Actually, it is intended to be a continuing leadership team to look at healthcare overall in the state of Idaho. That's the focus, and that's what we really push on with all the industry partners about how can we do this. We actually, this grant is full of detail, and we're bringing in the governor's health professions. I mean, we're really aligning this as a state. So yes, that is the goal, so look at this.
And is the, is the prospect, anyway, that NIC will continue to be the coordinator, if you will, or the leader in terms of this program?
I haven't really got that far.
All right, good. Thank you. Any other questions? By the way, this is very exciting programs, all of the programs, and you've done a nice job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, since this is the first meeting after the election, we now have, the next item on the agenda is the Canvas of the Board of Trustees election and Oaths of Office. Richard Martin?
Good evening. Well, as the clerk of the election, I just wanted to share the results of the Canvas. Congratulations to Trustee Wood and Trustee Howard for continuing with us on the board. Total votes cast for Kristi Wood, 28,861, and total votes cast for Trustee Howard, 28,134. Both positions were unopposed, so...
Chris, could you clarify that I had more votes than him, once again?
Happy to restate the numbers as they are.
If we ever have a disagreement, we refer back to that. Right.
I really think a prize is in order.
And we have the breakout by precinct to share with each member if requested. Happy to provide that. At this time, I would like to ask you to take the oath.
Yep.
If you'll just repeat after me.
Can you raise your hand?
Yes, please. I do solemnly swear to affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
Solemnly swear that I will affirm to support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the state of Idaho...
Constitution of the state of Idaho.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustees of North Idaho College...
Trustee of North Idaho College.
...to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you very much.
The next item is an election of officers. And I think what we'll do is, we'll start out with nominations for Chair, and then do Vice Chair, and then Secretary of Treasury. Judy?
Mr. Chair, after those comments from Kristi, I can't resist nominating you for Chair, since you have so many votes. There you go.
Can I second that?
The grand prize.
All right. Any, any discussion? Any other nominations? All in favor of the nomination of Kristi Wood for Chair?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. Kristi, you are now the Chair. I'm going to finish this election, and then I'm going to turn the gavel over to you.
Thank you.
The next position is that of Vice Chair. Do I have any nominations?
Yes. Oh, go ahead, Tom.
I would like to nominate Ron Nielsen for Vice Chair.
I would second that motion.
Any other nominations? All in favor of Ron Nielsen as Vice Chair?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The last office is Secretary of Treasury.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Judy Meyer.
Can I second that?
Yeah.
Good. Any other nominations? All right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. So we have a new slate of officers, and with that, this is your prize.
Before we continue, I really want to thank Ken Howard. Very sincerely, Mr. Howard, for two years, you have guided this board, spent a lot of personal time, blood, sweat, and tears, put up with all of what is this board, with all these diverse opinions and strong personalities, and you've guided us through it. And I know it hasn't always been easy, and you've devoted so much time, and we owe you a complete debt of gratitude, so thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. That takes us on to Idaho P-Tech Network. Director Alan Millar, Miller, Millar, how, Millar?
Millar.
Thank you.
Go with that. Peaceful transition of power, you got to love it.
Yeah. Well, I'll just hold this.
So my name is Alan Millar. I'm the Director of the Idaho P-Tech Network. I've been at NIC enough. I think I should apply for adjunct faculty, so for those of you who've seen the presentation before, my apologies. We did a little tweaking for this presentation tonight. The Idaho P-Tech Network, oops, that's the wrong slide. Stands for Pathways to Technology, Early College High School. Originally founded on a model out of Brooklyn, New York, where students, essentially, consist of a partnership between high school, a college, and industry. And I want to back up a second, say that we've been in partnership with NIC on this project from the beginning. Cassie and I have spent a lot of time together on the design phase over the last year. We're about a year and a half into it now, with about 58 students, and it's been, I just want to acknowledge the positive partnership we've had with NIC throughout this entire process. So it's a partnership between industry, high schools, and community colleges, and we're preparing students for careers in Idaho's high-growth industries, including aerospace advanced manufacturing, which we started with NIC, technology and healthcare. Our mission is to be that bridge between students and jobs in Idaho. So the situation in Idaho is that we are, the real situation in Idaho, of course, is that we lead the nation in minimum wage jobs, and what we're trying to do is change that. We have, one way to think of what we're doing is an engineered talent pipeline that's providing direct access for students into jobs that are going to do, where they're going to do significantly better than they might otherwise. There are the industries that we picked, and I'll note that were significantly different than conventional tech programs that were students to choose, and kind of based on what student choice might be. We're specifically choosing industries where there are jobs, where they pay better than minimum wage, and they demand some level of certificate, but typically not a four-year degree. There's 39,000 jobs available in those industries by 2018. When we say that they'll be available for P-Tech graduates, that's an estimate of the entry-level jobs in those fields, and that most of those jobs, 60%, will need a certificate or degree. So to summarize, oops, can I keep doing that? We do have available jobs that need a skilled workforce, and we need to step forward and fill that niche. I've been, obviously, working on this a while, and we've been using the phrase, it's the educonomy, stupid, which it kind of is. It's actually a combination of what education can provide. Some of the reading that we've done suggests that the reason the recession, you know, that we went through has gone on so long, and people haven't felt like we've come out of it, is because of the mismatch between education and the workforce. And so we're here to try to bridge that gap, with the help of North Idaho College. So barriers, what's in the way? We use, you might think of this as the students are swimming upstream, just like the salmon. You might recall, we can use the metaphor in Idaho, we're trying to get to Redfish Lake not so many years ago, there were two of them that made it over all those barriers. There's a few more now. Our goal as a network is to try to provide support for students in those transitions. Some of the barriers, obviously, cost of college, loan debt, lack of support through high school to college, the job transitions. One of the things we found with this work is that there is the clear pathway between what you're doing in school and a job at the other end of it is not visible to the students who are on that pathway. If you ask students, as we did here not so long ago, you know, what job do you see when you get out of high school if you're not going on to college? Invariably, they say some kind of service job. It looks like Target, you know, Starbucks, that's all they can see. They didn't even, they didn't even know that there's aerospace companies with good-paying jobs just right down the road up here. So our job as a network is to eliminate those barriers for students. So we are one solution. We offer a debt-free path to post-secondary education attainment. So currently, we're funded by the, by a foundation, and we can support students through all that transition, so we'll be with them as they progress all the way from 11th grade, post-high school, and into a certificate or a degree. So our, we help them choose a path. We have the hang-in-there portion of our work called staying on a path to college, and then we assist them to get an interview and potentially a job in one of these high-growth And our main goal is to build a pipeline of qualified students and prepare them for the entry into Idaho's workforce. And we've started with... And we've started with 58 students. So, how does it work? Students are exposed to the workplace in the 9th and 10th grade. We have a network of subscriber schools. Currently, there are six of them, with two more coming online in January, and kind of dispose them to careers in these areas. Once they officially join P-Tech in the 11th grade, they're seamlessly enrolled in college. Most of them at NAC, but we also are starting to work with other institutions at this point. We provide a coach, if you will, a post-second, or, I'm sorry, a career or counseling coach that provides support for them as well. One of the things you might have noticed in high schools is that the counseling process to, for, to help students choose their career paths has been somewhat broken over the last few years. Those are many positions that got, so, by the way, I'm a high school principal on my, or was, still am on my side job, if you will. And so, you know, those kind of positions have been hard to come by in Idaho, and so we replace that by providing that student with a remote advisor coach that speaks to them every couple of weeks and coaches them on how to, you know, everything from Phyllis out of FAFSA to how your grades are this week and that kind of thing. That career counselor stays with them through years one and two post-secondary as well. So you can see from this slide that we're going after industries that pay considerably more than minimum wage. You know, that's aerospace, advanced manufacturing, high-tech, and healthcare. By the way, if there's any questions at any point, just feel free to sing out, so, I mean, we don't have to wait till the end. Here are occupation pathways. We began by Cassie Silva's and her aerospace program, and the set of stackable certificates that she pioneered and got through the state. We work in the field of technology with the technical certificates right there. As you can see, those are the colleges that we're currently working with that are offering those programs. Pathway's a little different in healthcare. It's considerably more complex, but nevertheless, we're working to, for completion of prerequisites and program courses that lead toward certificates and degrees in the following fields that you see there, which kind of ties in with the TAC grant that just went out the door. Currently, we're working with three community colleges. We have MOUs with, of course, North Idaho College, Lewis Clark State College, and the College of Southern Idaho. And Dr. Dunlap was one of the first to, you know, was the first assigned to the MOU on behalf of North Idaho College, and serves as a board member for our P-Tech Board as So, when we did a lot of the design work on this process, and a key point to know is that we tried to design this thing from the point of view of the student, as a, of this, kind of the end-user idea, to make it seamless for them. So when a student signs up in 11th grade, they get free tuition, we provide them with a laptop, we provide them with that remote coach, we provide internship and job shadowing and connections to potential future employees. So, you know, many of our students, I'll back up a little bit, we're not going after the upper quartile of students. I mean, I don't, I guess you could argue whether they're doing real well, but generally, high schools in Idaho are set up to serve them, and they're doing pretty well. Those folks who have resources to consider for degrees, potential financial stuff, their parents have been to college before them. What we're going after is the middle 50, the students who look like, when they're in high school, like they're, and they do, they graduate in good numbers, but what they don't do is go on. Eight out of 10 current college juniors will not get a technical certificate, a one-year, two-year, or four-year thing within eight years of graduation right now. So we're not doing really well with those kids. So we tried to provide and make it easy for them, and our role is to provide, as I said, guidance over each of those obstacles and provide these kind of things when they get out. And when they do get out, they get, you know, a technical certificate, an A-A degree, they will also have, of course, a high school diploma, and then connections to a future, potential future employee, employer. What do employers get? Well, they get an educated, skilled, trained workforce. And a key point of this is feedbacking into the P-Tech program design. We've contacted probably in the neighborhood of about 40 different industries all over the state. All of them have signed up in some measure to provide feedback to students, things like mock interviews, what are the, you know, prompts that they might try to answer when they were going into something like that, feedback on student skills and direct skills that they need for the workplace. One of the interesting things is that, along with a certificate, when you ask employees, employers, rather, what they really want, they invariably have some kind of soft-skill component, whether that's called persistence, determination, attention to detail, et cetera. So by working with the remote coach, by working with those industries, we're trying to provide students with a direct exposure to those kind of things. And I'm going to do a little, we've got a little video at the end showing some of the students getting a little of that. So, in terms of partnerships with the industries, we have two ways to support P-Tech. We have P-Tech supporters, and we have P-Tech business partners. Supporters are those industries that may not hire directly two-year graduates or people with certificates, but they still want to support this educational initiative, and we have P-Tech business partners that are willing to consider students coming out of that end of the pipeline with a set of skills and actually interview them for a job. And here's some of our current partners and supporters. We work directly with the Idaho Commerce, State Commerce, on that, with Accelerate Idaho, some of the local folks up here. We just actually took a group of students on a tour in the last, well, yesterday, a group of folks were out at Ednetic's and also visited the technology department here at NAC, and recent past, they visited Empire Airlines and some of the other aerospace industries around here. That's us. That's our entire network, right there. We're not very big. Our, our mission is to actually link existing programs up, and I'm just going to do a little thing on the site visit if I, this movie will play. I may need some technical help. I don't have sound. All right, well, that's a silent movie. So, a group of students from Idaho P-Tech visited the Idaho aerospace industry here in North Idaho, including Empire Airlines. You know, the slide demonstrates that there's been a, this is a growth in the aerospace industry over the last two decades here in North Idaho, as well as actually across the state. There's quite a few of them down in Boise as well. Cassie, is that your shop there? It's, so, there's a lot of industry in all of those things. Tamrac up in Idaho, or up at Sandpoint. And, most people don't know, there's 2,200 workers at 200 establishments across the state of Idaho. So our students spent the day there, got to chant, a chance to do a little hands-on and I'm open to any commentary that people want to add. Actually, this is at the NAC machine shop, and they actually got to, you know, put their hands on composites, kind of figure it out, put rivets in to what could be an airplane And I want to thank Cassie and her team for assisting us in putting together that day, so. So that's the Idaho P-Tech Network. Any questions at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Millar. I'm sure the Board does have questions. Board? Ron?
You talk about, you talk about industry partners. If you put together a program with them where that they will hire these students on a part-time basis for the first year or two as they're continuing their education and work around their school schedule, so they get a chance to apply with their learning in the field, and then you almost guarantee them a job at that point, once they graduate?
Well, actually, of course, students would go on to, and finish up their training at a, at a college, so if they're in aerospace, they'd be finishing up, for example, here at NAC. We actually do provide on-the-job training, if you will, or internships. The original model started out with one industry. It's actually IBM in Brooklyn, so there's 140,000 people in that industry, and, or in that company, I should say, one company. And so they were able to promise internships and potential jobs for all of the graduates that are coming out of school. We don't have that situation in Idaho. When we've talked to industry directly about this, most Idaho industries are so small, they're not willing to necessarily commit that they'll hire one, someone three or four years down the road, but they will commit to exactly what you said, that they're available for on-the-job training, internships, and be associated with that company. Yesterday, Sean out at Ednetic spent probably two hours of his time talking with a group of students and really trying to get, to understand the nitty-gritty of what it means to be, you know, in a technic, in the tech industry. And so that's what we found, there's a great, there's a willingness to be part of that. The details of what it might look like will vary by company. We've got the DOL that's going to be to, doing some paid internships. Our goal is to have those students with the skills, when they come out of the program, be exposed to the industry that they could go into, so it's a natural fit. Ultimately, we're going to be judged on the quality of the students and whether they're a better fit for the company than somebody that just walks in off the street. I hope that answered your question. Thank you.
Board, any other?
Yes, sir.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Howard.
Who do you want?
You, Mr. Howard. We're going to stay on this side of the room.
All right. I noticed from the slides and the handout that this beta testing that's going to go on this year is essentially pretty well focused in North Idaho.
That's not true. We have two schools, about, almost half of our students are in Melba and Kuna, and...
So in terms of the number of schools, you have half of them down in Southern Idaho.
Well, we have two, two of the six, most of the schools will be up here, but those schools are larger down there, so they've got a larger share of our students. I think out of the 58 students we have right now, that about 28, somewhere in there, are from Melba and Kuna.
And beyond the beta testing this year of this program, what's the, what do you anticipate? Proceed, how do you anticipate proceeding?
We're going to be adding five to seven additional schools next year around the state. We're going to be expanding into the, into Southern Idaho. We're kind of pick schools by size and kind of geographical location, kind of pockets, if you will. We found that the smaller schools, some of them are calling us up. We actually took a call, cold call, if you will, from Leder, which appears to be possibly the smallest school in Idaho. I could be wrong on that, but certainly, it's pretty small, and so they've, they've been very receptive to the idea of providing this kind of programming for their students. So our, kind of, we're kind of on the working theory that if we could make it work in Leder, obviously, a lot of online kind of access, that students would have to access our courses online, that if it worked there, it could work anywhere. But anyway, we'll be, our cohort next year will add an additional 200 students and kind of expand around the state. We're thinking about a beta two, and we're going to make changes and improvements based on the lessons that we've learned this year. So by the end of the following year, we should have anywhere between 300 and 350 students.
Thank you. Mr. Banducci?
Actually, I have a couple of questions, so I'll just give them both to you. The first one is, if you would just remind us of the foundation that's underwriting this and where you're headquartered at, and then the second question would be, as, as we look at the eight schools you have listed, and then you've talked about some of the others, does a, does a school like K-Tech ever fit into this equation? Because they're, I don't know, are they more parallel to you, or can at some point they dovetail into it?
So, it's a good question. So, which might involve a somewhat complicated answer. We're funded by the JAA and Katherine Albertson's Foundation. We're in our second year, we kind of did a planning year, Cassie and NAC was deeply involved in, and went through a kind of a well-scope design process, and then started enrolling students last May. And, you know, then we got our second round of funding from the foundation. We're doing our next ask and anticipate another round, actually, this January, you've kind of moved the timeframe up, so we have more time to know how many students we're going to be able to enroll. Obviously, the foundation can't fund this program across the entire state of Idaho. Long-term goal would be to seek other sources of funding, including potential public funding. Answer to the K-Tech question, we've actually, I've done this very presentation to the folks out at K-Tech. You know, we're interested in trying to find work with them, to find ways to work with them. The key point is that the students, as they go through this process, the credits they achieve while in high school need to stair-step and be stackable, if you will, onto the next set. Many technical education programs don't in fact do that. They articulate, which is supposed to kind of work, but the data reflects that it actually, they aren't doing that. For example, we did a lot of work with some schools down in the Treasure Valley with, and talked to the folks at CWI. I actually asked the department heads there at one point, how many credits did you take from high school last year? This was seven department heads, and one of them held, I took one. I would have to argue, I mean, and it's a long, that's why it's kind of a long answer, the system's somewhat broken, certainly from the kid perspective. The idea that you're doing something in high school that you've later on got to apply to a college for, get accepted, and then, and only then would you get the credit for, it doesn't actually seem to work. So we've stuck with programs that actually have credits attached to them from the minute the kid passes them. So that means that technical prep, technical education programs have to change the way that they do business in order to be part of this. And we're working directly with the Department of Professional Technical Education, talking to them about it. They've acknowledged it's an issue, and we hope to eventually, you know, bridge out and work with something like that. So that's a really long answer to why we're not working with K-Tech right now, and things would have to change a bit before we could, we'd be able to do that.
Oh, I appreciate that, though, because there are clearly some complexities to that, and some structural changes, and obviously some systemic issues that you guys have to resolve, and so...
And from, again, from the student perspective, you know, when you take an English 101 class, which pretty much, I guess, anywhere, I don't know if we have any English professors in here, 101 counts anywhere, right? And that's kind of the principle, it's got to be a portable backpack that travels with that student, so that they, and so whatever, you know, what's the first aerospace class kids take online? Blueprints and things like that. That's a credit. It's just a credit. The kids pass, if they pass the class, they have the credit. And that's really important, that became really important to us in the design process, so we only, just work with programs that can do that.
Thank you.
Board, any more questions? Anything further? Great presentation. Thank you. We're glad President Dunlap is part of your organization. Thank you.
We are, too.
Board, that takes us on to Art on the Bulkhead, and I see some of our good friends from the city in the audience, and Mr. Steve Anthony, you are up, but you brought your friends. Did you want to introduce them?
Hello.
Hello.
Yes, I have Troy Timison, Finance Director here, and John Brooding, who will be, he's on the Art Commission, and he will actually be our Citizen Committee member that will be heading this project. And your equipment is a lot more modern than our city equipment, so it just takes us a while to adjust here. But this is, I believe, the second time I've appeared before the Board on an art project. The first one, I was here when we were doing the roundabouts on there. That was a cooperative project between North Idaho College, the City of Coeur d'Alene, and Lake City Development Corporation. And that was, to me, I think, one of our most successful...
on the Arts Commission, and he will actually be our Citizen Committee member that will be heading this project. And your equipment is a lot more modern than our city equipment, so it just takes us a while to adjust here. But this is, I believe, the second time I've appeared before the board on an art project. The first one, I was here when we were doing the roundabouts on there. That was a cooperative project between North Idaho College, the City of Coeur d'Alene, and Lake City Development Corporation. And that was, to me, I think, one of our most successful projects. We've had a concentration of putting art down here in the corridor with the wastewater treatment plant. I think the interpretive art we put with the wastewater treatment plant, Sid being able to do the tours in cooperation with the college. It's been a win-win situation for us. But what brings me here tonight is, and I know President Dunlap was there that day, when we dedicated the art pieces on the roundabouts, we had Cliff Syjon, who was there representing the Coeur d'Alene Tribe, to come and bless the art in that area. And as he was blessing that, it really was inspirational to me. He gave me, being born and raised in Coeur d'Alene, I never realized the significance of this area to the Coeur d'Alene Tribe. You know, I think we drive down to the reservation, went to University of Idaho, drove through there a lot, but never really paid a lot of attention to the culture of the tribe. And I think with Cliff coming up, that brought that to Coeur d'Alene. And so I started thinking and kind of discussed this with some of the council members, with Troy and John, that wouldn't it be great if we could work with the tribe on some type of project down here at North Idaho College? So I started conversations with Quanah Matheson, who is their Cultural Arts Director. And Quanah and I met a couple times to just make sure if this is the direction the tribe wanted to go to. And Quanah really got excited about it. So he actually, on this call, and I'm sorry it's so small, but this is the call that we're doing, but this verbiage in here was actually written by Quanah with help from the Cultural Affairs Office at the Coeur d'Alene Tribe. So we've had them kind of day one as a partner on this project. But before we went forward, the Coeur d'Alene Tribe was having a joint workshop at the city council, so I contacted Mark Browning and wanted to know if this was a type of partnership we'd be interested in before we pursued this any farther. And I think we kind of got to go ahead from Mark to pursue this. And we had a joint meeting, the city council, and the tribe, and we had three or four subjects, but when we came to this subject with Chief Allen, we saw him smile. And we saw this was something the tribe could really get involved in. So we just kind of started the process. I'm here before you tonight to present this project. We'd like to work in cooperation with the college and do, it's a call for entry for artists. And so we want complete cooperation with the city, the college, and the tribe. And so what this is, is the call is, we've submitted this, it's called Call for Entry. And the writing's pretty small, but it is a network-based call where artists can go in, look at the call, submit everything electronically to us. So we have limited this call to the Northwest, because we figured the Northwest artists have a better feel of what our culture is. And I'm just going to take a story. I get lots of calls for people that would like to donate totem poles to the city, and I have to explain to them, the inland Northwest tribes did not do totem poles. Those are coastal Indians. And so I think it's a little bit of, just doing this call would be for Northwest artists. We've limited to the Northwest. And it just kind of, like I said, that's why I have a printout for you. The writing is fairly small, but the verbiage is all from the Coeur d'Alene Tribe, just explaining their culture and what we're asking the artists to bring to the table. So he has some background going into it. And so extensive history of the tribe, what the lake means to them, and what this area of the college means to them. Again, you have the timeline there. Let's hope it'd be a little bit bigger. But we're looking to do a site tour on December 9th for any artists. We would meet and come over so they could actually look, look at the area and get a feel for it. And this might help a little bit. I think I'll just put up the picture here. So this is the actual area we're looking at. And so this is the Centennial Trail here, the one roundabout that Alan Dodge had completed there. This would be the site right there. It's called the Bulkhead. I think of it more as kind of the old crane pad, when the mill was there, when they brought the green chain lumber up. And our vision would be to have a significant art piece there that would be funded by the city, Lake City Development Corporation. But then around it, the tribe, we've met with the tribe, they would provide a historical kiosk or signage, telling them about the area. We'd have some signage representing the college and representing the tribe. So the city would fund the art, the tribe would fund any of the historical signage, or it would either be a kiosk or signage. So we're working with their staff now, just for whatever that would be. So we kind of just, we have just ideas now, nothing in concrete. And so it's a real beautiful piece of property there, when you go out on it. Kind of a little bit more of a close-up. We'd envision the piece, some nice landscaping, a bench, some lighting for it, but it would blend in on the lake there, and it's perfect. It has handicap accessibility, nice stop around the trail there. There is really no benches or anything on the trail at that point, so we can incorporate some of that in. And this is another view, where a river comes up, and the old Highway 95 Bridge went across there. So that area and I, the college, I know has done some work on that already to shore up the Bulkhead. And we believe the process we do is very public. It's a seven-member panel, and we've already asked Mark if he would represent the college on that panel. The tribe will have some members on the panel. And then we'd have citizens from the neighborhood, from the Fort Ground neighborhood, city council member. And what we did, if you remember with the roundabouts, we put them on display at the library for voting, then we had them at the college. And it's not voting, not voting, but for public comment. We would have them on the library, again, with the college permission, to get comments. And this one, we would actually take down to the tribe and let them have it on display at their cultural area, their wellness center, to get tribe, feedback from the tribe of what piece represents them best. So I'm estimating this call will probably attract over 100 artists, and it'll be narrowed down by the citizens panel to 25. Then the final four would be invited to do maquettes or little models for display by the public. And so I have John here, will be heading it up. If John would like to come up, and there's a, sometimes there's an assumption that the city chooses the art. We are just kind of the in-between to make sure it's all legal, to execute the contracts, and to make sure everybody touches base. But John's on the Arts Commission, and this is his committee.
Yeah. Thank you, Steve. Yeah, and I've been on the Arts Commission for, I don't know, five or six years now. And I really look forward to this project. And I'm also a resident of the Fort Grounds neighborhood, so I have a vested interest there as well. And we will choose one, a citizen from the neighborhood to also sit on the panel. I think Steve mentioned that. So we're really ready to get going on this, and I look forward to working with the tribe and everybody else on the committee to do this project. So I think it'll be great. Really excited about it. So, and I thank Steve for giving me the opportunity to do this. So, any questions? I'd be glad to.
Well, I bet there are, and so I will check. Mr. Nielsen?
How are you, John?
Good.
What was the original purpose of the building of this Bulkhead the way it was? There must have been at some point, the way they designed this, there must have been a purpose for this. I mean, it wasn't, I'm sure at the time they did it as a place to display art. What was it designed this way for?
No, it was built by, for the, for the DeHarmen Sawmill. And as you know, they brought the logs down and stored them in Cougar Bay. And then when they needed them at the mill, they would bring a couple of brails down at a time. And they had a crane sitting there on that pad, and they would pick the logs out of the water from there to feed the mill. So it was just a crane pad, basically.
So they went in and uplifted, gave a facelift to the, to the pilings around there, and then just put dirt on it and leveled it out?
Right.
But there was no, never an intention or a purpose for doing that, the way they did that?
No, no, there wasn't.
It was a little too small to build a condominium, so that's probably out of the question.
Little bit. It'd be a beautiful site. If you've ever been down there, the view from there is tremendous. Yeah, it's great.
Board, any, Mr. Dr. Dunlap?
The deadline for applicants for the, for the artists is mid-December. And once you go through that process, what is the rough estimate in terms of when you think the piece of art will be erected?
With our, this schedule is August, end of August in 2015.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Howard?
The proposal is that, and the reason you're bringing this to us is you want to erect art on property owned by NIC. Is that right? I mean, you're basically looking for permission from NIC to do this? Do I understand the purpose?
That's correct.
Correct. And I know Warren from our legal staff, I think, has been talking to Chris. And so there's a few little little details we have to work out, but we don't think they're insurmountable. It's, so basically, we're kind of giving you a heads-up now, but I know our legal staffs are kind of crossing the i's and dotting the t's. And so we will what, proceed until both sides are comfortable with that agreement. The only thing is, we wanted to get the call out at least, to get it started, because we have a deadline, but sometimes, if it's anything like with Kuna, we've been like five or six months and something. So we thought it was important to at least to get the call out, get it going. Our deadlines are flexible, and we felt comfortable enough that we can at least proceed that far, but we knew we have a couple of things as far as a lease agreement to work out with the college.
And when you say a lease agreement, are you talking about leasing the land, or just putting something on?
Well, that's kind of up to you. When we did the roundabouts, we just worked together cooperatively, so there's really no lease on them. But we're willing, if we have to on this, to make the project go. And maybe Chris can help a little bit. We've kind of turned some of that over to our, our legal staff, and Chris has been working.
We're working on a MOU currently, just to clarify, ownership of the property, maintenance for the art, and just to make sure that we're both good neighbors on this project, to make sure it's very clear.
And just, and I can, like, the maintenance of the art, once the city erected it, then we inherit the maintenance of it. We had one of the signs that somebody took a corner too fast and smashed it, so we paid to have it replaced. But the city does have a maintenance fund that we know that once we erect a piece of art or construct, that we have to maintain it to the standards of the college and the city.
The reason I'm asking the questions are that we have, historically, we've had some instances where people have put art on property controlled by NIC, and it, the Harding Center comes to mind. And it, we've not had good agreements on how it's maintained and who owns it. And all of these things have a life expectancy, and at some point in time, they need to be removed, maybe, or they need to be changed. And we don't want to create an environment where somebody's going to get upset, because sometime in the future, we may need the property for something else. And I'm just hoping that those sorts of arrangements are being worked out, and the city doesn't expect a 99-year lease or something like that.
Well, hopefully, I'm not around in 99 years to do it, Mark. That's all. But on anything we, we've done, we've always had an agreement that the city will maintain the art. And then we do have a decommissioning policy also, because we do know that things change over time. And so we do have a policy through the city that if we have to move a piece of art, we have to decommission it. There is a process we go through. We're hoping this one is going to be significant enough that, you know, it's there to.
But it sounds like a great project. It does.
One of the things the committee will look at as well is the durability of the artwork. We'll take that into account, and the, I guess, the ease of maintenance and the expense of the maintenance on it, so that will be kept to a minimum.
Mr. Banducci?
As we look at the timeline, as we go into the new year and into the upcoming budget process, I don't see anything in here on a proposed cost-sharing. Is there any expectation that we should be aware of, of our participation financially?
No. This would be funded by the city's 1% art fund and LCDC. So I've already talked to the LCDC board to make sure they're comfortable with it, and they think it's a good project. So it's, most of our, our projects, we do work real close with Lake City Development Corporation. They're probably our number-one partner on the art. And the other part would be 1%. And Todd, we do have our maintenance fund, too, that is fairly healthy to maintain it, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Ms. Meyer?
Ken, as you were, as you were describing some of the questions, do we talk about liability? Who, if this piece of art either is damaged, or somebody has an accident, where there's liability, responsibility, who has it?
I don't know if it'd be much different than what we have in the roundabouts now. And basically...
That's the, why we were pursuing an agreement on this, to make sure that we're very clear on both sides. With the roundabouts, there was no formal agreement on, on these things. It was more of a gentleman's agreement on how these would be maintained, hoping to provide some more clarification on clear lines of responsibility for those top issues with this new art piece.
Board, any further? Well, Mr. Anthony and Mr. Broening, I would just like to tell you that, obviously, we think it's a wonderful project. Just because we're all in positions where you have to look out for your institution, we will ask Chris and city attorneys to get, put together a workable agreement. But I will make it very clear that the college has been so longly associated with the tribe, that it's really kind of an honor that we would get to be part of this. This is their gathering place. This is their historical place. The beach is dedicated to them. The rose garden is dedicated to them. We have hopes through our nine-point agreement that we would have a longhouse, very, very possibly in that area. So it seems like a wonderful piece that just fits right in with what we're about. And I hope that we can come to a great agreement that satisfies everyone, and we can do this great project for the tribe.
I'd like to add one thing. When we did meet with the tribe, Alfred Nomi, their cultural art, are their cultural services director, he went and visited to me, and he said that actual spot is his ancestral camping spot.
Wow.
So when they had the powwow, that was the spot where his parents, or grandparents' grandparents, I guess, you know, were, that was their spot. So he, I got a call from his staff immediately and said, "This one's pretty important to Alfred on that, because this is his ancestral camping grounds during the powwow." So...
It's really neat.
So we're working with them. We have another meeting coming up with the tribe, again, December 2nd. So every time we meet with the college or the tribe, we will get that information to the college, too.
Mr. Nielsen?
Do I read this right, that the square footage on this pad is 3,000 square feet?
Yes.
Yes.
Probably look at the, verge with one stone type of deal, so.
Not a bad idea. So, so from here, I would assume that we're just going to get another report back, because you, you want to get this out.
Right.
But we will hear from Chris and from City Legal, that we've worked out an agreement, and then we'll move forward. Is that correct?
Correct. And so we'll work with Chris and Mark. And Mark will be on the committee, too, so he'll, he'll be able to do up.
And Mark, wonderful. Okay. Board, anything further? Thank you, our friends from the city.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that takes us to our constituent reports. Asnick, Richard Fortman?
Well, I had to modify it slightly because of the new elections. So congratulations, Chairman Wood and trustee Howard now. So that was my only modification. So congratulations on that. So Chairman Wood, Board of Trustees, President Dunlap, and guests. I'm happy to report that the progress of the Recreation Center Committee is going well, and Asnick supports all the work that has been done to this point. So we're very excited for, for that presentation in January. Everything is going as planned. The Student Government Board had two members this last weekend, Ty Holgate and Cheyenne Salazar, attend the first annual ISA, or Idaho Student Association, meeting down in Boise. And this was to collaborate on ways to increase student representation legislatively for the students of Idaho. So this is very exciting. Something that Benai Achievers worked on very heavily last year, and I'm very excited to continue this year. So congratulations to those students that got to go. And Cheyenne Salazar was elected governmental relations coordinator, so watch out. She's going to be, come right after you, so. They also attended effective lobbying meetings and how to organize effectively and accomplish goals. So it was very beneficial to our student government. In addition to that, the Student Events Board attended a NACA conference, which stands for National Association for Campus Activities. And that was, their intent was to scout talent to bring back to NIC, so we have good programming for our students as far as adding events and things like that goes. So that was quite eventful. In addition to that, we also have our Thanksgiving dinner to be held this Saturday. Everybody's invited to come. That is open to the public. We have anticipated up to 600 people. We prepared for 600 people. So I encourage all to come. And that is going to be this Saturday in the Student Union Building here, from 2:00 to 6:00 o'clock. We are accepting volunteers. We are accepting volunteers, so if you'd also like to volunteer, stop by the Asnic office and let us know, we'll, we'll be more than happy to try to find you a spot on that. In addition to that, I think that was everything that we wanted to, wanted to let you guys know that we're doing, so if you have any questions...
Chairman Wood.
Yes, trustee Banducci.
Richard, for your dinner on Saturday, other than volunteers, are you guys soliciting contributions financially, or turkeys, or food, or are you guys pretty well set for that at this point?
I, we, we were unsure of the intent in which that we wanted to, we wanted it to be very welcoming, and, and we don't want anybody to feel like that they have to contribute in any way to this dinner. So, we didn't want to have that, that stipulation, making people feel like that that was necessary. But, we also said, "All right, if you want to bring some food, or if you want to donate monetarily, that there will be an opportunity in which you could do that through the Student Events Board." We'll have some members manning that, and then also student government. So, talk to those individuals, and they'll be more than happy to, if you want to help out in the future with, like, say, getting some food together for St. Asnic, or, or some money together that we could give back to the community, we'd be more than happy to do that, so...
Okay, but not a lot of advance on that, but you're, so you'll be prepared at this point?
We're, we're prepared to accept things on behalf of the community, to give back to the community, but nothing, nothing set in stone by any means, so, yeah.
Great job.
Good question. Thank you.
Board, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Fortman. Thank you. That brings us to Staff Assembly. Carol Jones.
Good evening, Chair Wood, trustees, President Dunlap, and guests. Staff Assembly held its general meeting on November 13th, and we had two guest speakers. One was Kylene Lloyd, who's NIC's Student Services Data and Information Analyst, and she just gave us an overview of the fall enrollment numbers, and she also explained to us what type of data analytics she could provide to us. And Kylene is very gracious, and she offered her services, and just told us to give her a call if we needed something, and that was on Thursday and on Friday. Vice President Martin needed some student data, and Kylene was wonderful and got that to us within the hour, so she is a great resource for the campus. Our other speaker was Dean of General Studies Larry Briggs, who took time out of his busy schedule to explain the GEM courses to us, or the General Education Matriculation, which is Idaho's new process to provide a more coordinated framework for the General Education Core classes. So, he just gave us an overview of that. And then, at every meeting, we provide information and updates to the Staff Assembly, and this time, we are going to be lending our support to an Asnic event, which is St. Asnic, and the Asnic sponsors the Tree of Sharing, and Staff Assembly participates in that by having a food drive and preparing food baskets for needy NIC families. So, that will start next week, the food drive, and continue through December 5th. And as a matter of fact, at the holiday, NIC's Holiday Party on December 5th, we're going to have a table out there for the last-minute donations of food, and we also accept cash donations. Jan Peterson in Auxiliary Services takes the food we get, goes shopping with the cash donations, and puts together a complete holiday meal for those who've been on the list for those. So, that does conclude my report, and are there any questions?
Are there any questions, Board, for Carol? Great report. Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to Faculty Assembly. Erin Davis.
Good evening, Madam Chair, trustees, President Dunlap, members of President's Cabinet, colleagues, and guests. When I last stood before you, we were not yet at midterm, and now, here we are, almost in the home stretch, and faculty are focused on helping students do that final push and finish the semester successfully. Since I last stood before you, the Executive Committee finalized all faculty committee assignments for the school year and submitted those to the President's Office. Faculty Assembly has met twice since my last report. This month, Dean Larry Briggs came to our meeting to summarize the Idaho State General Education Framework. Update us on the general education and matriculation process, otherwise known as GEM, and provide us with the current status of our GEM proposals. The process of examining and discerning our general education core is a matter of importance to both faculty and students, and many faculty members have been engaged in this process for several months, so we really appreciate Dean Briggs taking the time to talk to us and answer our questions about this matter. In October, Dr. Lita Burns came to our meeting seeking faculty input on proposed changes to the Teaching Focus Policy. This is another matter of concern and interest to faculty, and we really appreciate that Dr. Burns took the time to come answer our questions. I would also like to thank her for inviting faculty to continue providing input on that via email, as I know some faculty have, and I thank those faculty who did that. Also, in our October meeting, the Faculty Assembly passed by majority vote a resolution to be presented to the Board of Trustees. Because the Board did not meet last month, we will present this resolution to you tonight. At this time, I would like to invite Senate Vice Chair John Trombald to come up and read this resolution on behalf of Faculty Assembly, and any faculty present who would like to signify their support of this resolution can stand at this time if they so wish.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board, President Dunlap, Attorney Mark Lyons. This is a resolution from the Faculty Assembly. The Faculty Assembly affirms Erin Davis as Chair of the Assembly and expresses its gratitude toward her for her representation of us before the NIC Board of Trustees. A clear understanding of the culture and history of NIC would confirm that Faculty Assembly meetings are, and have always been, held for the purpose of faculty information and discussions. And, as College Attorney Mark Lyons confirmed, these meetings are not required to be open to the public, but may include invited guests. Recalling a similar resolution we offered last year, we believe that trustee Banducci's conversational remarks do not reflect the principles of ethical trusteeship as outlined in Policy 2.01.02, Responsibilities and Duties of the Board of Trustees, in speaking out of order, showing disrespect for Chair Davis, and interrupting College Senate Chair Chantel Black. As a result, we respectfully request that Board members be mindful of the culture and history of meetings and committees here at NIC, and show respect for all constituent groups' representatives. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now stand for questions. Okay, thank you. Board, any questions, comments? I would like to make one comment. We certainly appreciate that the faculty and, and staff communicate with this board. It's very important that you do. And we have all made a private commitment that we're going to work very, very hard this year to, to fix those relationships that may have fallen on the wayside, and I've, I've gotten that commitment from every Board member, and we look forward to a really good year, and so, thank you for coming forward.
Thank you very much.
All right, that takes us on to Senate. Chantel Black.
Good evening, Chairman Wood, Board of Trustees, President Dunlap, and all of our guests. We met in October, and at that meeting, we passed three committees. That's Cardinal Connections Committee, the HR Advisory Committee, and the E-Learning Advisory Council Committee. And those were passed with a second reading, so those committees have already begun their work. And then, we also passed for our first reading Policy 7.04, Campus Emergency Policy, which we anticipate looking at for a second reading tomorrow. That is the end of my report. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Chantel?
Thank you.
Thank you. President's report, President Dunlap.
Madam Chair, trustees, and colleagues, good evening. I'd like to, first of all, acknowledge a couple people. Earlier this week, trustee Meyer was recognized by the Idaho Historical Society for her 12 years of service as a trustee for that organization, and she was, it was conveyed upon her the status of trustee emeritus. So, trustee Meyer, thank you for your service on that council, and we appreciate how well you represent the college. I would also like to recognize Mr. Mark Browning, our Vice President for Marketing and Governmental Affairs, who was designated as the Coeur d'Alene Chamber Volunteer of the Year for the entire area. And so, Mark, thank you for your service in representing the college well, also. And then, lastly, I'd like to recognize one of our students, Gabe Cruz, who is, who was in our entrepreneurship program, the first class of our entrepreneurship program, and he and a team competed in the Spokane Startup Entrepreneurship Competition, and out of 80 applicants, he came in third place, which for the first class is, is remarkable. And, so, kudos to him, and Mike Allen, who is the faculty member for that program. At this point, I'd like to ask Mark to update us on the Presidents and Chairs Meeting regarding funding by the counties, and also, the Four Corners update, if there are any updates on that. Mark?
Chairman Wood, members of the Board, President Dunlap, thank you. Had to check the date. October 29th, we had a meeting in Boise with the, the three community colleges, the Presidents, Chairs of the Board, and Representatives from the Idaho Association of Counties. During that meeting, we, it was a progression of some discussions that we'd had over the summer and the fall regarding some possible augmentation to the Liquor Fund to try to do something to help alleviate our current situation with out-of-district funding on that reimbursement. As we've investigated that issue, we thought we, we potentially would have had an avenue to pursue in the rounding formula with the Liquor Fund. Upon, upon further review, that is not a possibility. That formula has, the liquor division themselves have actually taken all, all of that rounding part of the formula, and if you'll, if you'll go into one of the state liquor stores, you'll notice that the prices are all 95 cents as they, as they end. So, any, any fluff in between there that we were looking to get a hold of has already been taken, so...
[laughing]
That was a swing and a miss. We did make substantial progress in helping the counties with a standardized and simplified residency verification form. Every county and every college had a different version of it, and, and there was some substantial work by Vice President Martin and others to, to help simplify that form, to help the work with the counties. There is work that's going forward, and we're working with the, the staff at the Association of Counties to look at a new distribution model that would change the, it would not change the total amount of the funds that go to the Liquor Fund designated for community colleges now, but rather, how they're distributed, and essentially, would get the counties out of the business of, of having to, to go back and forth on the billing, and would help the counties in terms of personnel, would lighten some of their workload there, and then also on the college side. So, we're, we're pursuing that now. That could, if it vets out, potentially result in legislation this year, maybe this year, maybe next year, but that's, that's where our status is at on, on our work with the counties there. It's been a number of years, as you know, working with the counties, and, and as dual credit grows, that really has helped to provide more of an incentive for counties from around the state to get more involved in this issue, rather than just some of the counties in the immediate adjacencies to colleges where they've typically had the most issue. An update on the Four Corners Project, President and members of the Board, is that there will be public hearings that will be scheduled by the folks at, at the City of Coeur d'Alene, I believe, the first week of December, that will give an opportunity for the public to look a little deeper into what some of the ideas are for the Four Corners Project. That is a number of, of different ideas that have been, at this point, just in very rough draft form, but that project would run all the way from Independence Point to north of the 95 Bridge. There are some ideas that are being talked about that would have an impact to us here at NIC, primarily, a repositioning of Memorial Field. It's been determined that the grandstand would stay in, in its current position, but the, the field would reposition that, with the reconfiguration, it would accommodate a soccer field, which would be of interest to us. There is one proposal that has the closure of Mullen, but then, a completion of Garden that would come in, so we still would have the same number of, of ingress and egress points to the college. So, those are some of the things that, that are being looked at by that group, but important to note that, that nothing has been decided or set in stone or brought before any of the groups yet. This is still very much in the, the public discussion and idea phase at this point, but there's some interesting ideas that are, that are being brought forth that would certainly change a look and the landscape from that point of Independence Point, running north. There are some factors, as we know, with the transference of the property from the BLM that still needs to be assorted and settled through, so there, there are many plates still spinning, but nothing that has been set down in stone yet.
Ms. Dr. Dunlap, I'm wondering, this is a little out of order, but that, that's a very interesting topic, and when you're done with your report, Mr. Timson's still here. He's a fan of our meetings, and I would love to have him maybe come up and talk about the city's motion last night in their purchase of property, when you're done, if you would agree to that, Mr. Timson. Wonderful.
I knew we could get him on the agenda.
Yeah.
At this point, I'd like to call on Chris Martin to give us an update on our capital project.
Madam Chairman, trustees, I'm happy to announce that the CTE project is moving along quickly. We were able to select Architects West as the design and engineering firm for this, this project. They have already done some great work on the programming phase, working to get as much out of this facility as we possibly can to meet the needs now and in the future of, of our career and technical education programs. Last week, Young Construction Group was named as owner's representative for this project. They have already jumped in, coordinating a meeting for the week of December 2nd to meet with the architect, as well as all of the program stakeholders, to look at the programs that are going in this building, and, and again, trying to make sure that we focus our scope on this building very, very closely, fine-tune it to make sure that we get everything that we need in this project. They've also started working on the budget and the overall schedule for this project. I would like to thank trustees Nielsen and trustee Meyer for serving on the selection committee for the architectural firm, as well as the owner's representative. Appreciate your input and your guidance, and also, thank the community members, Jim Coleman and Mayor Steve Woodmire, for their work in the selection committee for the architectural firm.
Thank you. In the past, North Idaho College has hosted a legislative send-off event, and because of the number of events that take place for those legislators, there are a number of organizations that have agreed to consolidate and host one event. And the event this year will be on December 11th at 4:00. There'll be a reception, and then, from 4:45 until 6:00 PM, there will be a program, and we will have representatives from District 2, 3, and 4. It will be held at the Garden Plaza of Post Falls, and for those trustees that are interested in attending, if you'd let Shannon know, she will make sure that you, you have tickets for that event. And this is being hosted by the Post Falls Chamber, the Coeur d'Alene Chamber, the City of Coeur d'Alene, Coeur d'Alene Realtors Association, and North Idaho College, and so, it will be a one consolidated event to send off those legislators. Couple months back, trustee Nielsen asked myself to follow up on pursuing changing the name of the Office of PTE to the Office of CTE, Career and Technical Education. The other community colleges have agreed that they will support us in that effort. We have also talked with the new director of the PTE office, and he is in favor of changing that name as well. And so, the next step will be to enlist the support of the universities, and then go to the college, or, excuse me, the State Board of Education. So, I just want... So I just want you to know that that is moving forward at sometimes glacial pace, but it's moving forward. As you may be aware, but so that everyone is aware of this, the advisory committee to the Permanent Building Fund has recommended $4 million funding of our joint use building. And that recommendation should go forward to the legislature and hopefully they will make a decision in favor of that at approximately the February timeframe. We also have, that's a support from University of Idaho, from LCSC, from LCDC, and Kootenay Health. It's a very collaborative project and it will help create additional space in our Myers Health Science Building for those new healthcare programs that are coming onboard that Christie Doyle and Sarah Flayland mentioned earlier this evening. We have taken on an ambitious goal of reviewing and updating all college policies. And it has fallen behind schedule, but we are still pursuing that. We are about 40% complete of reviewing policies, bringing them forward and having the board approve those policies. And so our goal for the remainder of the 60% is to have that done by the end of this year. And so right now, the college senate does not have any policies to review before them, but by the end of this week, they will have quite a few to begin reviewing. And so we will keep that in the forefront. I know there are some policies that are of importance to particular trustees and we will make sure that we get through those. So I just wanted everyone to know that that is moving forward as well. Earlier this week, I met with Mayor Jacobson from Post Falls and the CEO for ATC Manufacturing, which is advanced thermo composites manufacturing that is moving from Spokane to Post Falls. And their business is in the aerospace business and they produce parts for aircraft, for Boeing as well as Airbus, that are made out of advanced thermoplastics and composites, which is a relatively new process and there are very few companies in the world that do this well. The foundation has been poured in Post Falls and they're hoping the weather will hold so they can begin erecting that building. But part of attracting them to Post Falls was not only the new incentive by the Department of Commerce that has been put in place, but also our aerospace training center. And in support of that, Mr. Jacobson, who is, excuse me, Jorgensen, who is the CEO of that company today, donated two Haas CNC mills to our aerospace program. And that's about a $70,000 donation. And so Cassie, congratulations on that. And that donation will be made through our foundation so that Mr. Jorgensen can receive the tax credit for that. And we look forward to serving that company once they do get fully moved over to Post In addition, the North Idaho College Foundation has agreed to support the college's request for capital campaign and assistance with the CTE facility. And a feasibility study will be underway very soon and a report out will come forward late winter. And that study will provide the necessary information for the foundation to determine the likelihood for a successful campaign, as well as the appropriate fundraising goal for the campaign. And we have asked the foundation to raise $5 million in a combination of donations as well as through grant support. And Sarah Flayland from the foundation office and Shannon Goodrich and Chris Martin are working on an economic development grant that will be submitted in March. And that will be for $3 million as part of that overall $5 million raise. I'd also like to report out on the, there was a trip that the foundation leadership, as well as myself and trustee Meyer, went to in Washington DC that provided training for our foundation leadership and the rest of us with regard to fundraising, developing a strategic plan with the North Idaho College Foundation. And it was a very good conference and we were there from the 5th of November through the 8th. And so Rayel, thank you for inviting trustee Meyer and myself on that trip as well. The last thing that I want to mention, Mark Browning mentioned the potential for a soccer field. And our men's soccer team, which has transitioned over to the new INWAC league, is 17, two ties and two losses and competed for the INWAC championship this past weekend. So they did quite well. They didn't win the championship, but they came in runner-up for that championship. And that's out of all of the INWAC schools. And so the transition is, is going well. And the soccer team did exceptionally well and I received a note of thanks, actually from the coach and some of the players, thanking us for the move to the INWAC. They felt it was a very healthy move for them and they appreciate the fact that now they're in a league where there's competition, whereas previously our soccer teams just played independent teams out there. So congratulations to them. And madam chair, that completes my report and I'd be happy to turn this over to Troy Timison, unless you have questions of me.
Well, let's see if there's questions of Dr. Dunlap. Board, questions? Great, Mr. Timson, thank you for stepping right in. You don't even know what we're going to ask.
I do not. Good evening, Chair Wood, trustees. I was really here for just the remainder of the highlights this evening and the presentation of the audit.
I see. Well, we will get to that. I was really interested when I read the press this morning about the council's approval last night of the land purchase. Could you give us some details on that?
Yes, thank you. Council last night moved forward with an earnest money agreement to buy the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad. Starts actually at the end of the land that we're talking about to lease from the Bureau of Land Management, which is midway into Riverstone, heads northwest towards Hutter. So that entire section is owned in fee by Burlington Northern Santa Fe. That was appraised at $4.3 million. We have negotiated a purchase price of 2.5. We are partnering with the Lake City Development Corporation. They will acquire the ends of that railroad line. We will continue to work into the purchase agreement for those details and will close that January of 2015.
Great. Are there some kind of visioning guidelines in place? I mean, it's probably a little too soon, but wondering how the BLM piece that we will be involved in ties into city purchase and LCDC and long-term plans.
That's a great segue. Our mayor was just down in California, working with a number of landscape professionals and visionaries, and he brought that project down there to say what could happen, what might happen, and has just come back Saturday from that conference. So it was a great opportunity for him to present that. So we'll be looking for public input. Last night, we also closed an ad hoc committee that was put together to look at the Spokane River Corridor. And in their input, they said, gain as much public access to the water as you possibly can, keep as much open space as you possibly can to see the river, and if at all possible, have the greatest connectivity you can to the trail systems that exist. So as we look to go west on that, from Hutter towards Post Falls, those tracks are being used and they will continue to be used to support the business. But someday in the future, maybe that could be a connectivity for trails going towards our west to Post Falls. City of Coeur d'Alene has just hired the former planning director from the City of Post Falls. She starts on Monday, so we have that transition in place as well. So no definite plans by any stretch of the imagination.
Great. Board, do you have any questions about the Four Corners, why Mr. Timson's here, or the BLM land transfer, where we're at in the process? Any questions from the board? I guess they, they don't have any questions.
I do know going forward that we would like to get the lease in place, get the planning done, and then move to the next direction, which is to acquire that property. That would take an act of Congress, literally. And so we will pursue that and have some ideas. And now that we have an administrator that has some connections on the front of politics and things like that, we may work that side of it as well.
Right. Well, yes, trustee Meyer.
Still absorbing my geography here. And trustee Howard, I think you have highlighted to us that as a college, we need to understand land ownership adjacent to our land and where are we, both geographically and economically? And the real question, control over the land in that section that's right along our higher ed campus quarter. I don't know how you're supposed to answer it either, but I know you've been thinking about it and I was, wanted to be sure that that stretch of land, adjacent to us, belongs to the...
BLM.
BLM. And so now what you're telling us, Troy, is the BLM, and you are, no, you're Burlington Northern. I've got too many alphabet soup here.
I apologize, yes. And my map is not very good since I had so much warning to prepare for this. So yes, the BLM is next to the college right now, Bureau of Land Management.
Right.
They're going to enter into that lease once we have a master plan for public good. And then there's a follow-up step. And that's the one that would go to Congress to ask them to turn that property over.
To...
We'd love to get it deeded to the right entities so that we could do something on it and have it be permanent. And that would be the opportunity that we would have with North Idaho College.
Mr. Howard.
I'd like to be more specific about the right entities.
Correct.
It's been my understanding from the time we first started talking about this in my discussions with Mike Gridley and other members of the city, that when the lease is, been negotiated with the BLM, the BLM requires a description of the use of the property. And the property that is adjacent or contiguous with NIC's property or between Northwest Boulevard and NIC's property, in the future, is designated as educational, for educational purposes. And, and that in the long term, in terms of, if we get past the lease and we get into a gift from the federal government, that that property would be deeded to NIC for NIC's use. Is your understanding different than that?
Well, again, we haven't gotten to that level to understand what that appropriation would be, but getting the designation now in the lease for educational obviously helps a great deal. And we are a taxing entity, you're a taxing entity, and those land transfers can happen pretty readily.
Okay.
I think adding names to that particular appropriation may be difficult, but anything's possible, right?
I guess I just don't want to see us go down this road and then 10 years from now, and it may take that long to get some kind of legislation, find out that NIC's interest has not been protected in terms of access to ownership of that land. I mean, that's important to us and I think we've stepped back and stayed out of the way because we want to make sure that the city is the driving force and that is able to do what they need to do.
Well, I would suggest to you, you've been very clear on that particular point and any of us that have been paying attention fully understand what NIC's interest is in that parcel right there. I mean, you have a PUD that ties right into that, that you brought forward to city council and we approved that, so good point.
Thank you.
Trustee Meyer.
Just to follow up on that then, is there anything else you need from us as a board to reconfirm what we're looking to have happen?
We may need your assistance as we go to the feds. That's where we can get together to get our representatives to assist us to get that act of Congress, once this lease is in place.
And so the follow-up would be, you'll stay in touch with our administration, so our administration can tell us when you need something from the board, but in the meantime, keep going.
Absolutely.
Our board is feeling.
Absolutely. Thank you for all your assistance on that project.
Mr. Timson, you've been very gracious to not even been on the agenda and you stepped right up and answered questions. And these were all things that we've been thinking about and talking about and you have certainly helped ease some of our concerns. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, board, that takes us on to old business, which there is none, because it looks like everything has been gone over that we were concerned about. New business, tab three, the first reading of Revised Head Start Policy Council Bylaws, Job Description and Revised Wage Scale, and the 2013-14 Annual Report. Welcome, Beth Ann Fuller.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chair, Chair, I had Chair Howard, so now I need to say Chair...
I responded.
Wood. And Board of Trustees, Dr. Dunlap and guests, thank you for giving me the opportunity to ask, answer any questions that you have about the first reading of Head Start Policy Council Bylaws, Head Start Job Description, Wage Scale Modification, and our Head Start Annual Report.
And so Beth Ann, I take it that you were not going to hit the highlights, that it's been up for us to read this. And board, if we have any questions?
I can certainly, I can certainly hit the highlights.
Well, I think that the board has read through the packet and so I'll entertain questions for Beth Ann. Trustee Nielsen.
There's a proposed wage scale of 214, 215 with, with entry level wages and top wages. Does this have a, a beginning before that the increases were proposed? Is there a sheet or is it from the, from the federal government that mandates this?
So our wage scale is, is presented each year with our grant that was approved. We are asking for a change in that wage scale. And to give you just a little bit of a background on why, we want to add a Child Development Associate credential level, which is a Level 1 entry position, supporting a course of study offered by NIC. This CDA certificate matriculates into the associates in child development that is offered at NIC. This is a degree that educationally qualifies our teachers and assistant teachers for positions in our program. It is also a career pathway and a viable employment opportunity for students pursuing a career in early childhood education, which could include some of our parents and, and some of our entry level staff. This strengthens our collaboration with NIC Children's Center as a lab school where students have direct lab experience in a high-quality setting, which includes Head Start services there. So we are finding that there's a crunch in finding viable child development students across the state. All 13 Head Start programs, including our tribal Head Start program with Coeur d'Alene Tribe, Mountain State's Early Head Start here in this area, and our program especially are looking for those child development graduates. And being able to use that CDA level and getting them into our program and supporting them to continue on to their associate's degree and their bachelor's degrees is our hope with that. And therefore, we added what would have been that extra lower level entry to be able to recruit these, these students and, and as employees.
Board, any other questions? Beth Ann, I, I always enjoy the report that you submit and I'm going to hit a few highlights because I think it's just so important to, to stress to our community what Head Start does. So 265 children up to date on all age-appropriate preventative and primary health care. 280 children received dental examinations. 279 children up to date on immunizations. 202 children transitioned to kindergarten. 26,526 breakfasts served. 34,220 lunches served and 13,384 snacks served. It just goes on and on, of course, where it gets into the, the program, the curriculum and, and children you've helped with disabilities and children, homeless children that you've helped. It's an incredible program that you run there and you've always done a remarkable job. And you, you do a wonderful presentation to our board every year. And you do a wonderful presentation to our board every year. So, I'm wondering, Board, normally we do first and second reading, but if you don't anticipate that you're going to need any further information, then Beth Ann, is there any reason to have her come back for a second reading? Or would you be willing to make a motion to approve tonight? Madam, or, excuse me, trustee...
Judy's fine, Judy.
I just call you madam. Trustee Meyer.
I don't want to deprive you of the opportunity to come back, but I'm also happy to move that we accept this... Is the word "policy"? I have paperwork in front of me. Acceptance of... I lost the wording.
Pressed Board action on Tab 3.
Council bylaws.
Got it. Thank you.
There we go.
Head Start Policy Council Bylaws.
I have a motion...
In fact, do we need to do Job Description and Revised Wage Scale also to cover it all?
Yes, please.
Then that's my motion, to accept the Revised Head Start Policy Council Bylaws, Job Description and Revised Wage Scale for 2013-14 Annual Report.
And the annual report. Thank you. Do I have a second to the motion?
You know, I'll second the motion so we can have some discussion.
Okay. Thank you. There's a first and a second discussion. Trustee Howard.
The whole idea, I think, of us having a first and a second reading is to have an opportunity, not just for us to digest things, but also to hear from the public about any questions that may have come up when this topic is introduced. And although I appreciate the fact that we don't get much comment from the public about these things, nonetheless, I think it's a good procedure, and I would like to see us put this on the next agenda for a second reading, only so that we keep with that policy, unless there's some particular reason why we shouldn't. And so, although I seconded the motion, I really would vote against it.
All right. Beth Ann, is there anything pressing that you would like to move forward on this?
No, that would be perfectly fine.
All right, then I...
Beth Ann gets to come back next time.
Yeah. I'm seeing that we can take a vote, but I'm seeing that the Board prefers to stick with their procedures, and so I guess the proper thing would be all in favor of Judy's motion.
Don't make it personal. The motion.
The motion.
The motion, okay.
Opposed?
Here.
Okay, so we will... Motion fails. We will ask you to come back, and we'll stick with our procedure. Thank you.
Good point, Ken. Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to Tab 4, NIC Financial Audit for the Year Ending June 30, 2014. Scott Hoover.
Madam Chair, our presenter is coming. I wonder if, as we do this every year, if there's a way we can sequence the agenda so these diligent folk don't have to... They could be earlier in the agenda, let's put it that way, because this is new business, but I also know, and that usually comes at the end, but as a courtesy to some of our folks visiting, maybe there's a way we can look at that.
Okay, I'll take that under advisement, and President Dunlap can school me on that as we work on these agendas.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board and management. My name is Scott Hoover. I'm a CPA with Magnuson McHugh. Thank you for having me this evening. Just wrapped up the audit for June 30, 2014, and there's a number of... The college undergoes an audit each year for a number of reasons. I'll just wait for the slide here. Boy, that's loading, apparently. Some fancy graphics for you here. So, like I said, the state, or the college undergoes an audit each year to comply with state statutes. State statutes mandate an audit, also to comply with the Federal Single Audit Act, because you receive significant federal money, and to comply with debt coverage. So, the users of the financial statements can take comfort that the statements conform with generally accepted accounting principles, otherwise known as GAAP. They also have assurance that the statements are free from material misstatement, and they can be comfortable that the financial statements are adequately presented, that all the disclosures are complete and accurate, and in compliance with federal requirements. Cut right to the chase, since we're all hungry, right? So, there's actually three different audit reports within a governmental audit, and the first one is the report on the financial statements, and this is the report on the actual numbers, as well as the supporting disclosures. If you... Do you all have the package, the bound copy in front of you here?
Yes.
If you turn to Page 3 of your bound report, that's the first report on the audited financial statements. And this report does a really... It's really well-written. It's basically boilerplate, but I always like to highlight the second bold heading here, and that's Management's Responsibility for the Financial Statements. And since I can't say it better myself, this is the only thing I'll read verbatim here, I just always like to emphasize Management's Responsibility for the Financial Statements. So, it says, "Management's responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States." And this includes the design, the implementation, and the maintenance of internal controls relevant to the preparation of those financial statements, and also responsible for making sure that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. And then our responsibility as auditors is to plan and perform the audit in accordance with professional standards, and then to gather enough sufficient evidence in order to be able to form an opinion that the financial statements are free from a material misstatement. And I'm happy to say that our opinion on the financial statements this year, as always, is unqualified or clean opinion, so that's as good as you can get. The second report that we issue in a governmental audit is the Report on Internal Controls Over Financial Reporting and on Compliance. And this report, as part of our audit, we're required to gather an understanding of the internal controls over financial reporting, the critical controls. And so, as we plan and perform our audit, we obtain this understanding, we document it in our work papers, and if along the way we find anything that's a weakness or a gap or deficiency in internal controls that rises to the level of a reportable finding, then we would stick it in this report here. And that's the... That report is on Page 74 of your package here. And we did have a finding this year, and it really pertains to grant revenue recognition, specifically. There were two grants. There's the Idaho Small Business Development Center Funding, it's actually a contract, Program Income, and then there's also the Albertson's Foundation IBEST Program. And these, when we looked at the revenue recognition for these grants, we found that the timing of the revenue recognition was not proper when we applied the accounting literature to those grants. And really, I'd just like to emphasize, these two grants are unique, and somewhat unique in that they're prefunded, so you get all the money upfront, whereas most of the grants are on an expense reimbursement basis. And so, we posted a journal entry to correct and take that revenue and stick it back in the year that it should have been recognized, and so we've run that through the financial statements, and it was... It just happened to be a large enough dollar amount to where we felt that we should report it as a significant deficiency. So, there's two levels of a deficiency, if you will. The bad one is a material weakness in financial reporting, you never want to hear that. A significant deficiency is not all that uncommon, so... Maybe management could speak to this more later, but I really feel that this is just a function of the college in recent years, as we've heard tonight, continuing to grow in terms of the number of grants, the size of the grants. And so, our recommendation in this finding is that management establish a formal process for evaluating each grant, taking a look at the... Applying the relevant revenue recognition guidance with respect to the grants and contracts to each grant, have... Setting up a formal process for that moving forward, I think that would be... That's our recommendation. Any questions so far to this point?
Mr. Howard.
On the internal control that you just talked about and your recommendation to establish a formal procedure, when I see in your report that the effect of such a deficiency could result in material misstatements in financial statements, did you find any material misstatements in the financial statements?
I believe with the combination of the two programs that we're talking about, it did result in being, I think it was about $500, $550,000 total, and so it was material, I think, in the aggregate.
And what is the effect of that? I mean, I'm not sure I understand. So, we have a deficiency in our procedure, it resulted in a material misstatement, but was the money properly accounted for?
Yeah, it was just the time... So, the money was received upfront, and without trying to get into debts and credits too much, the money, the revenue, the cash came in the year when it was received, and revenue should have been recorded in that year. What happened actually was... So, the cash is all there, it's not that like the money was being misspent. It was just the unused portion of those funds was recorded as deferred income, as opposed to what it should have been. So, it was essentially reflected as a liability to carry forward into future years, and it should have gone to retained earnings, to fund balance, to restricted fund balance for those programs. And so, that's what we did. We undid the deferred revenue, put it, and then it got converted to... It converted into restricted fund balance, if you will.
Just a follow-up question. Now, you indicated that your recommendation is to establish a formal procedure to correct this deficiency. Has such a procedure been formulated, to your knowledge, or presented to you to see if it satisfactorily meets your recommendation?
I would defer to Chris on that. We've talked about it.
We did respond to the deficiency with our plan. That's been presented to the auditor as well, but the key thing there is that we have a process in place now when we receive every grant to determine if it's an exchange grant or if it is not, so that we can properly account for it from the beginning. And so, that has been implemented, and Sarah Garcia and I have talked through this, and we will review each grant.
Anything else?
Does that conclude your report, then?
Oh, no, I mean, keep going. I'll be brief here. That's the meat of the presentation. The third report is the federal audit of the major programs. We had a clean report on that. That's where we evaluate the compliance with the larger federal programs. Just some brief financial highlights here that pulled from the management's discussion and analysis. We saw operating revenues remain fairly stable this fiscal year to last year, about $19 million each year. Operating expenses decreased about $2.4 million, largely due to changes in staffing. State appropriations increased about $370,000. Overall net position, which assets minus liabilities equals net position in the government world, increased $3.7 million. Moving quickly into fund balance here, I'd like to just touch briefly on fund balance and why it's important. So, your general fund, your unrestricted fund balance, it's important to have a healthy general fund balance because your revenue streams, as you know, are not consistent month to month. For example, property taxes received in July and January protects the college from unnecessary borrowing, provides prudent resources to meet unexpected emergencies such as a recession, downturn in the economy, protect against catastrophic events, helps meet uncertainties in state and federal funding, helps ensure credit rating that would, in the need, in the case that the college needs to borrow money, and overall just helps ensure future financial stability. So, I have a... The Government Finance Officers Association recommends that at a minimum that governments maintain an unreserved fund balance in their general fund of no less than 5% to 15% of regular general fund operating revenues, or no less than one to two months of regular general fund operating expenditures. Put together a couple graphs here for visual. This just shows the college's general fund unrestricted balance over the last nine years. You can see the last few years, it's remained $11,000, $12,000, $12 million. This is like the GFOA recommendation here. This is a glimpse that they recommend a minimum of two months of days expenditures in the general fund. You can see over the last several years, the college has had about three months, which is good, is strong. Here's another way to look at it. Again, the GFOA recommends a minimum of 15% of your annual revenues in your general fund balance. Again, pretty strong here, 29% 2014. I should add, though, that I guess after June 30, you guys did set aside a significant portion for the CTE building, so that's... You'll see a different picture there moving forward. And that concludes this exciting presentation of the audit. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Hoover, Board, any further questions? Oh, Trustee Meyer.
Not a question, just a confirmation, then. In the last slides where you talked about the fund balance, that we're well within what we ought to be.
Yeah.
Look at it again to be sure we've monitored that, because I think it was the...
Yeah, the Government Finance Officers Association, they recommend the minimum, so I think as an entity, as governors of the Board, you'd like to have a strong balance sheet, strong equity there, strong fund balance, so.
Okey-dokey. And the other one was the two months. I guess that's back a sheet.
Yeah, so you have three months, a little over three months. 105 days, as of June 30, or it's a snapshot in time.
And that was one of the things, I think, that we as a Board, as we look ahead to doing some creative financing, funding, that we should feel good about, at least as of June 30 at midnight, whatever, we're in good shape, so we have some cushion, which was, I think, part of what our responsibility is, that we have the administration know what the rules, suggestions are, and then maybe we need to look at how that flows through the next year till next June 30 at midnight. Okay, thank you.
Trustee Nielsen.
I was... Had the opportunity to sit with Chris and Sarah and with Scott and go through these financials I went through last year. Got a real education on the complexity, and as you pointed this out, we got a chance to listen to the discussion that took place about this grant recognition, and all it was was the way that it went on the balance sheet and not recognizing, and it was just a pretty innocent air there. As we went through that, between Sarah and her years of experience, and Chris is as good as he is with that, as we went through the numbers, I was impressed with the small amount, with, you could say, significant, but with a small amount of airs that were there. So, I felt very confident when I left the meeting that this is a reflection of the state of the college and that they're following proper procedures, so.
I agree. I mean, this is, like I said, it's fairly narrow in scope, but did rise to the level of a deficiency. I just want to pay my compliments to Sarah, her team, Chris as well. It was just a pleasure, you know, working with them, and a very smooth audit, and all in all, very sound controls, and everything's working really well as far as the processes and the accounting, so.
Anything else, Board? Well, it's a cause for celebration when you have a clean audit. And Chris, you're kind of hanging in the wings. Did you want to add anything?
I also just want to give my thanks, being brand-new to the accounting team that's here tonight and to Sarah Garcia and her team. They did an outstanding job, and it's great to come in, especially to a role like this, knowing that it's a clean shop, so I appreciate their hard work and their efforts. Thank you.
I have to jump into that now, because knowing that we have money, you're supposed to be real creative in how we figure out what we have ahead.
Mr. Nielsen.
So, I would make a motion that we accept the audit for the year 2013-2014.
Okay. Can you hold that motion for one second, Trustee Van Ducci?
Sorry, I had one quick question. Sorry, Ron. One of the things that I just want to make sure I understand, we've had some discussions over this last year regarding the Booster Club and the Foundation and the component organizations and how those fold under our jurisdiction here as a college and as a Board of Trustees and the binding and natural accountability that we ultimately have for those organizations. How were they addressed in this audit through June of last year, and how will they be addressed in this year's audit going forward?
The Foundation is included in, as a component, as a discreetly presented component unit, so we include Moss Adams audited financials of the financial statements as well as their footnote disclosures. We basically rely on Moss Adams' opinion, put that in our report. The Booster Club... The Booster Club, uh, we evaluated whether or not it should be reported as a discreetly presented component unit in the report. And we made the determination, I believe, also last year, that it's not. There's a few different requirements that we look at in, in the accounting guidance. There's three different requirements that have to be met. And the last one is that it has to be significant. And when you, when you look at, um, the Booster Club in, in relation to the college as a whole, it's, it's very small, so. Really, that's the main reason that third requirement is not met.
What would be the threshold to register as significant?
There's no bright line there. It's professional judgment. So, yeah, I mean, I, I took a, a look at it just in terms of how much money you guys get from the athletics department from then in a given year in relation to anything, total revenues, total assets, and it's a drop in the bucket.
Hold on, please. Well, the, will the recommendation be then for the Booster Club to have some sort of, of audit on their own or some sort of a, an accounting or oversight? I mean, I'm guessing we're still going to review the books, as it were, or have some sort of accounting for the Booster Club. I mean, I don't know if it's ten thousand or fifty thousand, but at some point, somebody's gonna want to know money coming in, money going out.
Um, from, from our, from the auditor's standpoint, because it's, like I said, it's very small. I, I mean, if we would not, we would not perform any procedures for the Booster Club to get comfortable with that because it's not within the realm of our report and our opinion. But I could certainly understand, it sounds like there may still be some obligations there as a board from a different perspective to maybe have, encourage an audit, encourage their board to have an audit or, or some sort of procedures done annually.
Go ahead, Chris.
This is a point of information. The, the Booster Club does do an audit. They do it every two years. And so they have done audits in the past. They're not an annual audit, but they do have a regular independent audit. And then further, we're reviewing their books, as it were, on a monthly basis. They're reviewing those, uh, turn those over to the business office and we're reviewing those now.
I would just wonder, there's just been so much interest in that in this past year that we might be... Well, just that we're looking at it just because of all the interest, yeah.
Thank you. And Mr. Nielsen, if I could have your motion again?
Sure. Uh, motion would be is that we accept the audit as presented for the year two thousand thirteen, fourteen, performed by Magnuson McHugh and Company.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hoover. We appreciate your presentation and thank you, Chris. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I, uh, made a small error as the new clerk of the election earlier and did not ask for a motion to accept the canvas of the results. So with your permission, I would like to request a motion... To accept the canvas of the election.
Could I have a motion, board, to accept the canvas of the election?
I'd like to move that we accept the canvas of the election report for the election of November two thousand twenty-five, fourteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us, we're almost there, board. That takes us to, uh, action on designating an NIC representative for K-Tech governing board. And I would really like to thank trustee Nielsen for carrying this forward and working so hard with the K-Tech board, which involves, as you know, three school districts and then the, the business industry to, um, get to the point we are. This is, this has been a, a long time goal for NIC and this is a movement in the right direction. So thank you, trustee Nielsen, for your work on this. And I would, um, I would entertain any discussion about or, or I guess, um, nominations. Yes.
Uh, madam chair, the, the reason I asked to have this on the agenda is because we've had, uh, some discussion in the past as to whether, uh, a trustee or an administrator should be appointed, uh, to the K-Tech board. And, uh, the three school districts that participate in K-Tech have their administrators sit on the K-Tech board. And it would be my recommendation that we also have an administrator appointed, uh, to the K-Tech board because most of the, um, relationships we have out there will be on the operational level, whether it's working, uh, through, uh, curriculum issues or sharing of equipment or, uh, other types of relationships. And so I'm, I'm seeking, uh, the board's guidance on this in terms of whether you want a trustee or, uh, an administrator to represent the college on that board.
Okay. Board, could I get some feedback on that?
I'd like to start out, I guess, by just making a motion. And the motion would be that the administration be authorized to appoint the NIC representative to K-Tech.
Do I have a second, board, on that motion? Hearing none, motion fails. And so can we have discussion at this point of trustee Nielsen?
I happen to sit on that board and it's a pretty, um, it's a pretty open discussion. And yes, that the three school superintendents are represented there. But, uh, um, I believe that the information that we need to flow to go back from, um, and, and the relationship between there, I would like to see a trustee to trustee relationship where that one of the trustees from here would come and sit through, it's an hour and a half. We don't meet, uh, as often. Uh, I think that probably proportionally is five times as many hours for functions here than it is at K-Tech. It's a pretty simple education system, a, a, a pretty simple structure and very quick to get through it. I think that it would be helpful for, to have a trustee alongside our current board there to come back and do a report to the trustees uncensored, uh, unedited, directly to what the communication is. So my recommendation would be is that we put a trustee on that board that would represent also the college and the community.
Madam Chair. In light of the fact that, uh, trustee Meyer and trustee Nielsen have been our liaisons with the folks through this process and, and jointly locating our facility out there and, and the synergy we've got with K-Tech. And since trustee Nielsen is already on that board, as one of the founders of K-Tech, I would like to make a motion that we nominate trustee Meyer to be our current board representative to, to the K-Tech board.
Okay. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
All right, um, discussion? Yes, trustee Meyer.
Uh, thank you. Thinking about the logistics here and, uh, both seem to have, good, have valid points for me to think about. Uh, one of them is what's the current composition of the K-Tech board? There's reference that you're on it.
There's three school so, superintendents from Coeur d'Alene, Poles, Falls and Rathrum. And then there's two private sector members, which would be, uh, Jim Tippett's, general manager and director of Bayshore Systems and myself. And then they have, each one of the superintendents has, uh, brings their, part of their executive team there. So there's a, there's a, a board participation of only five, um, which they are mod, um, modifying that K-Tech board to be able to accept an NIC member. But there's about twelve people from the treasurer of the different schools and some of the people from the K-Tech administration, which made up a ten, um, Tim Fortune, the executive director and their team there, so.
The follow-up and then, thanks, Ron. So, uh, let's also then tell more about what the role of the K-Tech boards, what do they do? What, what's their role in operating K-Tech?
A lot of the same that we do here, which is approve a budget, uh, review, um, uh, forecasts and to deal with the day-to-day governance of their, the school districts have an umbrella over the top of K-Tech. And that's why there's a minimal amount. Jerry Kane is our board chair and, um, and, and is involved in the day-to-day discussions with the executive director and, and managing him on a day-to-day basis. But, uh, most of it is things, uh, problems with the heating system that maybe requires some legal system, get some advice, some counsel, um, and just the day-to-day side of the business. But it's significantly, uh, less than what we deal with here.
And my thinking with everybody here is, is Ron, in spite of whatever the amount of time is, I think I need, I wanted to understand the role of, uh, our finally getting a vote on, on that board is if it's peer-to-peer, then it would seem to me it's the trustees who oversee the school district are our peers and the operations end of it. And I think we're, it sounds like K-Tech has the same approach. We board here, set policy and, uh, guide our president. And in this case, then, the K-Tech board is setting some policy and guiding that leader, which is Jerry Kane?
Yeah, the, the, the K-Tech board does not have a board of trustees like the school districts do. K-Tech's governance is done within the three school superintendents and the two, uh, private sectors. So we would come on as a part of the governance, uh, of the K-Tech.
And I think I'd like to, uh, chime in a little bit. Um, I think that we can accomplish what we both want. Uh, I would like to see it be a trustee. I think I've been pretty upfront about that. Because I do see the K-Tech board as a, even though they're, uh, superintendents, they really are, they're, they're a governing board just like this one. So they, they really have that level of authority. And so, but clearly they rely on, on their administration. So I would suggest that if we appoint a trustee as the voting member of the board, that we certainly ask Dr. Dunlap to also designate, uh, someone from the administration to attend those meetings and be our advisor as well. So I do think we could have both of what we, I think we could make this work.
And that's my clarification then, is the voting part of it is, is trustee is what we're describing. But the actual implementation, because I think we need to be real clear about the distinction between poking at what they're doing versus setting policy or, as you say, looking over the financial. I'm just thinking about those distinctions because I think it's, the whole purpose of having our liaison with K-Tech is to understand better how we can in fact, uh, coordinate, collaborate, implement programs that it's up to the administration to do. And I don't want to get in the way of that as potential, any of us being on the board. On the other hand, if it helps, uh, keep the board informed and helps the board understand what the administration's trying to do, um, I'm pondering both ways, so.
Sure. Um, trustee Meyer, are you willing to serve in that position? Because there's a motion on the floor, so I suppose that would matter.
Oh. I'll do whatever the board feels is the best way to help make K-Tech and NIC successful and working together.
And for clarifications is that, uh, that the curriculum that is used at the, in the K-Tech CTE departments is NIC's curriculum. So it's not like that we're going and having two sets of, of, um, of qualifications and curriculum being used. So, um, I, I think that most of this, we have Mark Browning's attended, Doug Anderson's attended. We've had a number of representatives there. I think that the information flow, uh, even though that I sit on this board and do is, I'd just as soon have somebody independent there come back and report to there. And I think it's a great idea. Every one of the school districts has probably one to two reps sitting at the table um, and, and an advisory role instead of a voting role. And it, it, it makes it a nice balance. So if we had a trustee as well as a representative of the school, especially with what's going on right now with, uh, with, uh, the possibility of joint using some facilities and assets that are between the two and, and as we look at some of the programs that, that, uh, that as they continue to grow out there at K-Tech, I think it would be very helpful to have somebody there, so.
Um, trustee, we'll get to you, Dr. Dunlap. Trustee Howard?
You know, I, um, I am puzzled quite frankly by this board's continued desire to put trustees on what are really operational committees. And we say that we want that so we can have a trustee come back and make a report to us. But we've had trustees on these different committees and we have yet to have a report from any trustee about the committees. What we're really doing is we're putting trustees in operational roles. And, um, and sort of losing track of the fact that we really are a policymaking enterprise here. That's our role. And, um, in historically with regard to K-Tech, we've had operational, i.e. administrative people who have represented, uh, NIC's interests. And that's the way, um, our relationship with K-Tech started and that's the way it's been run up till now, with the exception of the fact that now we're being offered a voting position on the K-Tech board as opposed to simply being a non-voting member. I think that really our, the relationship on an operational level is reflected by the fact that the school districts, quite frankly, have operational representatives. They don't have members of their school board on there. And as much as we may want to sit there and be a, um, a representative as a trustee from NIC, it really makes no sense, quite frankly, to me. It's an operational, uh, position and we ought to, we ought to entrust it to our administration.
Okay, uh, trustee Howard, I certainly respect your viewpoint. I, I disagree with it. I do think that, um, this, the board level at the K, the K-Tech board level is, functions very much like, uh, school board of trustees or this board of trustees where they deal with policy and governance and budget. And I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us to be part of that. And of course, as I've already said, I think that there's, there's certainly room for the administration to go along with us. There's no intention, I, I think, by this board to get involved in the operations. We would rely on our administration to, to advise us. I, I do like the idea that it is a trustee that sits on as a voting member. I don't think it'll take anything away from operations because we all work well together. So I guess at this point, I would see if anyone wants to call for the question.
Commenting one minute?
I'm sorry, Dr. Dunlap.
No problem, madam chair. I, I just want to comment on, um, the, uh, comments we've heard about the curriculum being the same at K-Tech as it is at NIC. And, uh, over the past, uh, month and a half, I've had an individual compare the two curricula side by side. And that's been, uh, given to, uh, Tim Fortune. And the curriculums are not identical. Uh, there are some pieces and parts that are the same and similar, but there are significant differences in terms of the outcomes and in terms of the amount of time spent on tasks. And so I, I just want to be clear that there are differences. And I'd be happy to share that with Mr. Nielsen.
I'll do respect, uh, Mr. Dunlap, as I agree with you that there is some differences. But the certification that they take is the exact same test and the preparation might be done a little bit different. But saying that is there is, is some tension that we've all recognized on behalf of our board from K-Tech towards us. We fixed that from the K-Tech side. Now I think that we can fix this on the other side, which is there are some very concerns about the lack of cooperation from NIC to be working with them. And so I think that this goes a long ways into fixing this relationship. So I stand very strong on where I think this should be and I call for the question.
I don't disagree with the decision on who serves on the board. But I just want to be clear about what we're saying with regard to, uh, curricula and them being identical. And I'll be happy to share that with you. We've shared that with, uh, Tim Fortune as well. And, and there are differences.
I know you're trying to wrap this up, but part of the education of our board is, um, shouldn't there be differences between what K-Tech does and NIC does? Uh, what are we expecting K-Tech to do here? And if we're going to be representing the college, it seems to me it would be to be sure that our administrative team on both sides is coordinated and no duplication and cost effective, all those things. I guess I'm puzzled about the, the curriculum issue. My understanding for K-Tech is it's, it's dealing with high school students to give them some skills to, for employment, but not necessarily the same credentials that we do at NIC. Am I correct or not correct on that understanding?
I, I think that that's a fair statement, other than the fact that it gives the students the skills to prepare themselves, but they go through a certification that would be for CNA, for ASME, for, uh, AWS, for American Wellness Center. Those tests are performed and that certification that they get from NIC, the certification that they get when they take it there, when they walk to employ, the employer does not see any... see any difference in that certification. Now, you can make a case for it, that if you go and you get your AS degree from Lewis and Clark State College, that maybe it's a higher level of classroom time and curriculum than you would get out of NIC, but it's still an AS degree that is there. So, we've had these discussions before. Their position is, is that NIC gave them the curriculum, that there's difference in classroom times, there's difference in a lot of things there, but they're teaching to industry-standard certifications.
There's been a call for the question, so, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
May.
Okay. Motion carries. And I would like to, as we move on to, well, now's a good time. I'd like to talk about committee assignments.
Madam Chair, before we leave this one, because I think we're puzzled, one of my ideas, because I'm still happy to represent if that's how it works out, may be to figure out a way that do we need to continue to have a Board Member? We test drive it for a while to see if the communication is going right. And I would be willing, because I still hear some mixed messages on the education of the student, which is the whole goal we're trying to achieve. And I would suggest that one of the things we work on with the K-Tech Board is hopefully the most efficient, cost-effective education we can do. And if there's still some gaps, then I think my goal on being on that Board would be to get those fixed up. And maybe at that point, we can review it again whether or not we need to continue to have Board Assignment there.
And I think you could always bring that forward for discussion at a later date. I think that's perfectly fine. And, you know, I'm excited we're moving forward on this. I think that trustee Nielsen's right, that we're going to repair relationships and that's what we need to do. I would like to talk about committee assignments. We don't really have it on the agenda, but I wanted to suggest that trustee Meyer, when you're not available, that possibly trustee Banducci would be willing to fill in, and actually, any of us could. He might be the go-to person first, but I like the idea of trustees being able to fill into different positions, if that suits all of you as well. The other committees that I wanted to reaffirm were the, Mr. Banducci and I will continue to serve on the Joint Use Committee, even though it's really not up and running yet, but we're going to get that money, aren't we, Dr. Dunlap?
Working on it.
And then, we will meet. And then, the, I'd like to ask trustee Howard if he would continue to serve as our liaison to the Foundation, if you'd be willing to do that, trustee Howard?
Thinking so, aren't you?
Yes.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, I assume the same thing happens when trustee Howard's out of town or can't catch the Foundation meeting? He'll notify you and get coverage some other way.
Sure. One of us will attend. And there's a few other things I'd like to ask trustee Howard to continue on in his role with focusing on out-of-county tuition. You've done such a remarkable job on that, and I don't want to interrupt by starting all over. You have the most knowledge base, and I was hoping to continue with that as well.
Okay.
Well, I'll just keep heaping it on then. So, the other piece was you've done a wonderful job in working with the college presidents and Board Chairs. And any way that you can continue to be a help in that regard, I would appreciate that as well.
And I would like to speak to that one, because that's certainly been a crusade I've had all along, and to thank Ken for the trips to Boise. And the reality is, you'll probably keep going to Boise because most of the folks don't come up here, since their two community colleges are in the southern part of the state. But, as we head into legislative session, and we're talking about joint use buildings and funding and the tuition issues, I think we're far more effective as we visit with legislators when we're a community college system of three, to remind the legislators of that. And I think we can be the poster child for colleges cooperating instead of having, ending up in a food fight, which too often happens. Thank you, Ken, for doing that one.
Madam Chair, if I may, since you've touched on it, and either you or President Dunlap can speak to this, but now's a time that we can share, I think he's done it on a few occasions, but speaking of the joint use facility building, my understanding is the Advisory Board has recommended that the $4 million be funded towards that facility. So, that's a huge step. All three of the colleges put it as the number-one priority. Really going at that as a team, speaking of doing things as a team, as trustee Meyer was just talking amongst the three community colleges, it was nice to see Lewis and Clark State and U of I partner up with us on that and all put it as number-one. The Advisory Board putting that out there gives us some raw optimism for the legislative session.
Sure does. Yeah, that's great. Good point. Well, I didn't really have a Board Chair report prepared, maybe Mr. Howard did, but really just the committee assignments. So, I would move on to remarks, good of the order.
Do we have some from the chair, previous chair, where there's things you'd like to highlight?
I guess I'll do it under the remarks for good of the order.
All right, okay.
I just wanted to sort of continue what Mark had reported on earlier about the meeting with the Association of Counties. As you'll recall, a year ago, two years ago, when we started talking about out-of-county tuition, the counties were generally saying, "It's not our problem and we don't understand the problem." I must confess, in the two meetings that we've had with the Association of Counties, they have come to recognize the problem. And I think we now have made some significant headway in terms of them understanding not just the present problem, it turns out, out-of-county tuition, but how it's going to morph into more problems in the future. And now, they're starting to help us look for solutions. We're a long way from a solution. Mark's been working on a committee of one for the most part, I think, trying to come up with a solution. But, there is some suggestion right now that, as he already alluded to, that the counties are maybe thinking, maybe we shouldn't even be in the business of distributing out-of-county tuition, that maybe we ought to create a central fund where the liquor fund money goes into the central fund statewide and it's administered by the community colleges. Now, that's one proposal that's being looked at. It may not go anyplace yet, and it's going to take some legislation to change it. But, there are some seismic changes that will probably be taking place with regard to the out-of-county tuition and how it's paid. When we start looking at the history of it, and every time we get into it, it's interesting how, when you look at the data of when the out-of-county tuition was created using the liquor fund and the way it's turned into today, and you look at the numbers, everybody is convinced, and the legislators and the county commissioners that we've talked to and the county clerks, recognize that it's totally inadequate. So, we've made some headway, and I guess I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that we've got a long way to go yet. But, a significant step has been in, I think, creating a realization on the part of the counties, that some changes have to take place.
That's a really good point. I'm wondering, though, if we went that direction where that one pool of money was created, wouldn't they still need to really increase that pool of money?
Well, two of the things that need to be done, if that proposal is to work at all, is to make sure that there's enough money in that, but also to make sure that there's a mechanism by which the fund will grow as time goes on, which we haven't had with the liquor fund. And so, we're, as I mentioned, we're still a long way from any solutions. The reason I mention that as a potential is because that has been suggested and is going to be explored, but it has a lot of work that needs to be done on it. There is enough money in the liquor fund right now statewide, quite frankly, to take care of the problem. If we got all of the county shares put into a general fund, there is enough money right now. But, it doesn't have any growth potential. And there's going to be a lot of growth with dual credit and those kinds of things. So, to accept that and not have as part of that some way to grow the funds as the out-of-county attendance grows, we'd be putting ourselves in a very, very difficult position. So, we're a long way from a solution.
Madam Chair, not to belabor the topic, but it's an interesting proposal. The irony of that is we'd be one of the counties that'd have to lobby pretty hard to our folks because we're one of the counties that runs this tremendous surplus. So, I'm sure they're using that in our county budget because we have a tendency to get a lot of liquor money back, so there's a lot of alcohol consumed in this county, and we don't pay much out-of-county tuition since we host the school, and it's our taxpayers carrying the burden. So, Cootney County's an example of a county that has a tremendous surplus from the liquor fund. So, we'd have to convince our own people here in the county to give up that money.
The proposal right now, when I said there's enough money there to do it now, would exclude those counties that are presently hosting colleges. All right? So, your point is well-taken. If we took the money from Cootney County and they're already paying property taxes, they might be upset with that. But, the balance right now, if we excluded those counties that are presently paying property taxes, there would be enough money to cover it.
So, the county would still receive their funds?
Yes.
That'd be an easier sell.
Well, but still, maybe I shouldn't even have mentioned this, I just want you to know that we're moving in the direction of trying to maybe revise fundamental formulas. So, it's going to take some work.
Bet. No, no, interesting to hear that.
The only other thing I'd like to bring up under good of the order, Board, is the December 11th meeting. I'd like to get an idea if you think you can attend. I will tell you that I've served on the Legislative Committee with Mr. Timison for, I don't know, 15 years we've been doing this. And our experience at the city is we get some turnout, some years are better than others, and we've tried to be as creative as we can to entice the legislators to come and meet with us. The colleges experienced the exact same thing. So, we all put our heads together and thought, "Well, maybe if we try to pool together and give them just a couple of events to attend, we'll get better turnout." And so, I would guess this will be a pretty good turnout when you have the chambers involved as well. So, I'm hoping that you can all attend. Did, Mark, where's the Garden Plaza? What is that?
Next to Walmart.
It's the retirement home.
There's the life care centers there also.
Okay. Is there, there must be a meeting room there?
They have a huge banquet room, incredible food, and it's a great facility to do that. So, they've done it there before in different legislative send-offs.
Wonderful. So, Mr. Banducci?
One thing while we're talking about the legislature, one thing I think we should compliment our staff, and maybe President Dunlap, I should have left this for him, I don't mean to steal this thunder, but we hosted the legislative brunch, had about 70 legislators here. Staff did a tremendous job with that, and it was very successful, it was very well-received. And then, a number of us attended the Governor's Dinner, and I thought that went really well. And again, getting the NIC brand out there and trying to advocate for our school. So, I thought both those events were very successful.
That's great.
Well-represented. And particularly what we hosted, I heard a lot of positive feedback on that.
And thank you to the trustees that were able to attend. The other thing I'd like to remind the Board is our next Board meeting is moved to a Tuesday night, December 16th. So, make sure you put that on your calendars. And I would assume at the next meeting, we will talk a little more in detail about our trip to Boise, our J-FAC presentation, kind of make those travel arrangements as soon as possible.
That date is a fixed date, the 27th is for sure.
Mark?
Tuesday, yeah.
Is that a guesstimate, Mark?
J-FAC time, because I'm working on.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, the J-FAC presentation by President Dunlap will be Tuesday morning, January 27th. We have preliminary commitments to have the report to the Jermaine Committees on Monday, January 26th. I am pleased to be able to tell you that we'll get you in on an evening flight Sunday night, and we'll have you back out on your way back home Tuesday as soon as we're done at J-FAC. So, it will be a short trip for you this year.
Good work. Okay. All right. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Have a motion to adjourn? Did you take a motion to adjourn? Did you just wield the power? Adjourn.